Okay.
Yes, good evening, everyone, welcome.
Yeah.
So make sure everyone can get in. Give them a moment to join.
Oh, no, you haven't let everyone, okay.
I think we're all here, or people are in the audience, so go ahead.
Okay, I'll start. Good evening, welcome to the Locksford Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, December 13th. If we could please have a roll call.
Commissioner or Chair Chalmers?
Present.
Commissioner Swisher?
Present.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
And Commissioner Williams is absent tonight. So that is a quorum present.
Thank you. And a special thank you to Brock for attending tonight, because I know he just flew in, so thank you very much. To make the quorum happen, which is important to us, because we want to be able to get through the applications, so I really appreciate it for everyone who comes to these commission meetings. I wanted to make a couple of comments. One is, there's a lot on the agenda tonight. And this is with this, these hearings are supposed to have public participation. And when it gets late into the evening, it's some, we start losing people. So we don't want to go too late. And also commissioners all have jobs that they have to do in addition to being on the commission as volunteers. So we're going to set like a, it's sort of a deadline of approximately nine thirty. And we'll try and get through as much as we can by nine thirty, and if not, we might have to continue it to the next meeting. But we can check in around nine PM and see how we're doing. That was my first comment. The second comment was if we, because of the amount on the the agenda tonight, this is particularly important. I'm hoping that any presenters could limit their presentations to just a maximum of ten minutes, less than that if possible. And if anyone has any comments on any applications, if they could also limit that to three minutes. And I'm going to ask Elise and Jackie if they could keep a timer going and let me know when we hit those time limits. So on that note, do we have any public comments on matters which are not on the agenda?
If you're in the audience, please raise your hand if you're I don't see any hands raised.
Nothing? Great.
No.
If you have no public comments on that, we could, I would like to ask for the planning director's report, please.
Thank you. The city has started a public comment period for the draft environmental impact report for the general plan update. And so that is out, and there's information on the city's website on the, on this document, and we welcome comments on it. And then the public comment period for the housing element draft is also occurring right now, and we're asking people to give comments on the draft housing element by December nineteenth. And that again can be done through the website or by email or dropping off a letter at City Hall or mailing something in or calling me. And there'll still be opportunity to comment after that date on the housing element, but any comments that we receive by December nineteenth will respond to and try to incorporate into the draft that eventually will come or will go to the state and also come to the planning commission, so they won't be missing any opportunity to comment, because you'll be able to comment again at the planning commission hearing, but we encourage people to to comment early. And then one of the big announcements we have is that we just released or started our online permitting yesterday. And there's some kinks that we're trying to work out. Our credit card processing was not working yesterday or today, but we're hoping that will be up soon. And then there's been some difficulty in getting contractors registered, but other than that, we're moving forward to having an online permit system, and it's called eTrack It, and it's through the website, so we welcome any questions or concerns or comments people have as they're trying to manage this new system. But that concludes my report for tonight. Unless you have any questions for me?
Any questions? In that case, thank you. Thank you very much, Elise. And I'd like to open the public portion of the hearing tonight. Like I said, we have, we have five applications that we'd like to try and get through. And the first one is at three fifteen Riviera Circle. I am, I can actually see this property for my house, so I am conflicted out. So I'm going to excuse myself from this meeting. And my vice chair, Swisher, Jeffrey Swisher is going to take over for me, so thank you.
All right, great. So let's hear the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioners Swisher. I have a presentation this evening. Can I get a thumbs up that you can see my screen?
Yep.
All right, this evening I am going to be presenting an application twenty-two seventeen for design review at three fifteen Riviera Circle. Applicant and property owners Laura Hamlin, or Laura Hamlin is applicant, Leanne and Bradley Werner are property owners. The applicants are requesting approval of planning commission design review to allow for the renovation of an existing one-story residence, including a five hundred and fourteen square foot second story addition above an existing attached garage and a minor ground floor addition of thirty-four square feet. The subject property is located at three fifteen Riviera Circle within the Larkspur Marina area. The site is rectangular in shape and totals eight thousand sixty-five square feet in size. The existing home complies with the development regulation for the R1 zoning district, including setback, height, and FAR requirement. Staff wants to note that one-third of the parcel, the southerly portion, is within the Corte de Madera Creek, which is consistent with other homes in this area. Since the home was built in nineteen eighty-three, only minor maintenance projects have been completed on the property, and there have been no significant renovations per city records. This is the first major changes to the existing home. So per section eighteen sixty-four thirty, any addition exceeding three hundred square feet requires planning commission design review. The applicant is proposing to construct a five hundred and fourteen square foot second story addition above the existing attached garage, as well as a minor thirty-four square foot addition on the ground floor. This addition will increase the total height by five inches from twenty-one feet eleven inches to twenty-two feet four inches, where the maximum permitted height in the R1 zoning district is thirty feet. Proposed improvements to the upper floor include adding a family room, guest room, and bathroom, and a small balcony facing the south, the southerly backyard. At the lower level, a thirty-four square foot addition to accommodate an interior stairwell and landing to access the new upper floor is proposed. The design includes the addition of two new street-facing windows. One new window on the westerly elevation. Got west over here. So here we've got existing on the top and proposed on the bottom, so we've got two, two new window openings on the westerly elevation. And two new window openings on the easterly evolution, elevation. The bulk is softened by a new garage door, horizontal architectural elements, and a smooth stucco exterior which will match the existing home. As design, the proposed project will be below the permitted lot coverage, maintains the natural state requirement, and meets the minimum required setbacks. The proposed addition would increase the floor area from two thousand four hundred and twenty-four square feet with an FAR of thirty-one to two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five square feet with an FAR of thirty-seven, where an FAR of point, about fifty percent is permitted in, I'm sorry, forty percent is permitted in the R1 zoning district. The existing residential structure complies with all of the R1 zoning structure as does the R1 zoning regulations, as does the proposed. Staff finds the design presents reasonable additions to the residents that are well placed on the site and scale with the existing home and will not result in impacts to neighboring properties. Design review findings have been set forth in the staff report. The subject site and surrounding properties are generally placed in a side-by-side configuration with primary windows and views towards the street. The proposed second story addition is more visible from the street frontage and from adjacent properties. However, the proposed addition is consistent with the development standards for the R1 zoning district. Further, the height and placement of the new addition is compatible with the prevailing neighborhood scale and pattern of development in the Larkspur Marina neighborhood. Larkspur Public Works, Building Department, and Central Marin Fire have all reviewed the proposed project and have offered no comments beyond the established standard conditions of approval. At the time of this report, no public comments have been received. Staff recommends approval of project twenty-two thirty-eight design review for the proposed renovations and site improvements at three fifteen Riviera Circle as conditioned. And that concludes my report.
Great, thanks very much. Do we have the applicants who want to speak? Or architect?
I will promote them to panel. You have the right person?
I see Leanne Werner and the
Here, I'll bring them up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The, the intent is to increase this space above the garage and blend in with the existing architecture of the building. Maintaining the same finishes, the stucco, the natural wood that exists already on the fencing and minimize the impact. We, we wanted to preserve the strong element that the pyramid roof that exists in the house, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a vaulted beautiful ceiling, and so the only option we had, it was to work at this volume above the garage to minimize the impact on the existing house, and so just trying to break a little bit the volume by including this awning between the garage door and the upper level. And just, you know, be respectful of the existing architecture of the house. So I'm not sure if you have any questions?
I'll, I don't, but let me open it up to the panel. Is there anybody on, in the commission who has any questions for the architect?
I don't have anything.
Brock?
I, I guess my question would be why the architect chose to just go straight up above the garage as opposed to sort of mitigate the mass by stretching it across? But maybe that will come up later.
Stretching it across, I'm, I'm not sure I understand the, the question.
It, it's really, I guess I understand the reasons for going straight up above the garage, but from my perspective, I'm wondering why there wasn't some attempt made to sort of minimize that two-story wall facing the street?
Well, I mean, basically, there were not too many places where we could put this there without affecting the existing layout of the house. And the, the intent is to try to break the volume by introducing these trellis slash awning that breaks the, the wall, you know, between the two levels and just, you know, be respectful of the, the architecture of the house and, and so, I mean, we, we, we just didn't have any, any other place where to put this addition other than, you know, above the garage without affecting the rest of the house. And as I said, the, the strong pyramid roof, it's, it's just a vaulted volume that we couldn't do, we couldn't do anything other than just go above the garage in order to, you know, to add these square footage and, and still maintain the, the four-bedroom house that exists.
Okay, thank you.
Natasha, any comments, I mean, any questions for the architect? Oh, no, she's not here. I'm sorry, I forgot you. Sorry. Okay. So that, let's, is anybody else? No. So let's bring it back to the, the, the staff for individual comments.
Is there anybody in the audience that, that wanted to speak or?
The owner, the owners are online if there are any additional comments regarding the design that's been proposed.
But no neighbors or?
All the neighbors have signed off on the project.
If there's anyone in the audience that'd like to speak, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, great. So, no, I, I, I feel that your design, your architect spoke, unless there's something specifically that's sort of that you'd like to talk about. Okay, so let's close that and I'll go back to, let's go start with Liam for, for comments.
That's muted. I, I think it's a I, I agree with Brock that it's a, it's a, it's a tall wall facing the street. I think it will be broken up by the, by the awning and the garage door. I also think that it's fairly consistent with the surrounding properties in that neighborhood, so, and it, and it otherwise is consistent with the general plan, so I think I can make findings in support of the project.
Brock?
Well, we've, we've always struggled with this bulk and mass issue, and to me, this is sort of the prime example of bulk and mass that doesn't integrate, in my opinion, very well with the house. And I think there are, I, you know, I'm not here to, to design it. I think there are a lot of different options that would have added a lot more interest to the front of the house and Riviera Circle may not be the, the prime spot for, for that, but I still think that, that I think there were certainly options. And this is sort of the expedient way of doing it, which is right above, off the garage wall, so I don't think I, I can make the findings, but maybe everybody else can.
Well, I agree with Brock in, from a design standpoint, of course, not being an architect. I definitely defer to him. My, my gut sense of it is that it's not particularly attractive. I think because of that, it seems like it's just pasted on the existing structure. I, I mean, I think the staff report is such that you know, this is where we struggle as a planning commission, I think, to, you know, our, our sent, I agree, something we struggle with, the concept of bulk and mass. On the other hand, I think Riviera Circle, driving around that block, there's a lot of houses there that are very similar to this, and I don't think it's you know, probably one of the most aesthetically pleasing parts of Larkspur in general. I mean, some of the houses are nice and some of them are kind of like this. But I think that functionally, it's exactly what they probably intended to do. And I agree with the architect in the sense that, that pyramid structure that inside is probably one of the nicer parts of the house. Of course, not having been inside, but that to bring it across, I think, would probably interfere with the existing house. So I would say I reluctantly could make the findings for this with the understanding that the rest of the neighborhood is similarly constructed. So I guess that's my, my take on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean,
I'm sure that's a great reason for.
No, I mean, I mean, so, I mean, so is, I, our, our, our choices are to basically, you know, say, go back and redesign it. Because I, I think that would be a difficult task, but again, you're an architect, so what, what would be your recommendation here?
Well, I don't think it's about my architecture, and I'm not trying to design it for them. There are ways that it can be done where the pyramid remains. And I think this is just the easiest way to, to push it up off the garage walls, and I think we have to come to grips with the bulk and mass issue at some point, whether it's Riviera Circle or, or anyplace else, and to me, this is a pretty prime example of of that, so even, even if, I mean, I just, I, I always hate it when, when I was up there and other people were designing my projects for me, and, and I can't make the findings for this just because of the way it's constructed just right over the garage, but perhaps others can, and that's, you know.
Interesting. I, so again, my thoughts are, what, what, what is our, do you think it's in our purview to say that? I mean, I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm asking an honest question. Is it? Again, I don't particularly like the design either, and so, but from a design standpoint, is it making the neighborhood worse, I guess, is the question that I would have relative to, you know, other houses there. And I don't know if I can answer that question. I think it falls within the staff recommendations that it doesn't ask for any variances or anything like that, so really, we're looking at it from an aesthetic standpoint for bulk and mass. Are you in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, so do you believe it's in our purview to make an aesthetic decision like this? I, I guess I'd need some guidance here from some, a senior individual like you.
Well, maybe ask Elise, but that's what we have done in the past, and other planning commissions definitely focused on bulk and mass. And we're very adamant about that.
Yeah, I would agree. Then the bulk and mass of it, I think, is not compatible with good design. And I think that it, it could be improved somewhat above the, the way that it's currently done. As I said, it seems forced as the, I guess, the way I would look at it. I, I don't mind the rear elevation and side elevation, but I agree, the front elevation just needs work. And maybe some design element would improve that, so, okay. So any other comments?
Not for me.
All right, Elise. What, what, do you want, I want to take a vote on it?
Yeah, so when someone can make a motion.
Liam, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with, with only three people here, I'm not sure that I guess we got to vote on it, right? So well, I, I think it's, I guess, one more comment. I think it's consistent with, with the surrounding neighborhoods. I agree that I, you know, I don't particularly like the design. I mean, it, it is an imposing wall, but I think it's consistent with the surrounding houses, so from a neighborhood standpoint. So I, I think I, I moved to approve design review twenty-two seventeen three fifteen Riviera Circle as conditioned in the staff report.
I will second that proposal.
Okay. All those in favor, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Swisher?
I will say no.
Chair Natasha Chalmers is recused from this item. Commissioner Wagstaff?
No.
Commissioner Williamson is absent, and Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion fails. It's not approved. Would you like to, you could make a motion to continue it and allow the applicant to redesign?
I would make a motion to continue it, this project, and have the applicant submit a redesign which decreases the effect of bulk and mass.
Is that a motion?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yes.
I would second that.
Okay, all those in favor, Commissioner Swisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
And Chair Chalmers is recused from this item, and Mr. Williamson is absent tonight, so that motion passed and the item is continued. I see that the applicant has their hands raised. I don't know if you want to hear from them. Or staff could discuss what you, the comments you made.
If we can be helpful, I'd be happy to hear from the applicant.
Okay.
Hello? Hi. Hi, hello. Brad and Leanne Warner here. Thank you for taking the time to review our application. I understand that the, the bulk of the front is not exactly what you were hoping to see, and we knew that going into this process. The problem is that, you know, again, we have this pitched roof in the middle of our house, and the idea is not to have to do more square footage and spend more money in achieving the additional square footage that we need to have for our family. You know, we could go across the front and do a huge project, but that was not our intent, was to keep the project on a smaller scale. So going over the garage and not impacting our living in the house while we do this project was really important to us. So keeping that in mind, and also, you know, pointing out that there are other projects in our neighborhood, most recently, like in the last five years, that have been done similar to what we are proposing, so to have this not approved based on bulk on the street is a little bit, it feels a little defeating, considering that there are other properties that have this same element in our neighborhood down the street. And also the huge manufactured home that's going on across on Corte del Bio that is amazingly impactful to the neighborhood that evidently was approved, which is within, you know, ten feet of the bulk wall and a, a very large home that's going in on a very, seems a very small lot. I don't think our project is as impactful to our neighborhood as some of the other properties that have been approved most recently, so just making that statement.
I would just like to add that we have an appreciation for the aesthetic, and we've, we've done a, a lot of work to create, you know, with our gardens and the stucco, and, and we have a feel for design, our, our intent would be to soften through the garage door and trellis and landscaping to make it not as imposing from the street. And I'm not sure that that came through on the plans as well as we might have done.
Hi, this is Jeff Swisher. So I think that it would, you know, obviously, I think it's continued, it's obviously not denied. Agreed to continue it. So I think that probably the direction, if, if I may speak for the planning commissioners, is that possibly making it so that, that front, other than the, the little awning over the front of the garage, if there's something that could be done to make that a little bit softer and more less imposing, I mean, and I, and I completely have sympathy for your especially when you look at other projects like Corte del Bio, whatever is on the street. But it just, as, as presented, it looks just bulky and, and not in keeping with the intent of design review. Which is why, of course, I was a little bit, I guess, waffly is the best way I could describe myself, and I apologize for that. But I think, you know, continuance, if, if you could have your architect put a little effort into making it look more presentable, I think it shouldn't have any problem in the future, but, you know, let's, I would say that would be the guidance I would give.
Thank you.
And if I could add to that, it I mean, there are ways to, I know, I realize it's more expensive when you push it out across other spaces, but I think what Jeff is saying in terms of the awning, whether it's adding some brackets or something underneath, letting that slope just to break up that front facade a little bit. And maybe work with staff, I don't know. But I, I don't think you're real far off. So that's just my thoughts.
Thanks. We'll take that into consideration and come back with some ideas.
Great. Thank you so much for your patience.
Okay. So Natasha can return now. Hopefully she's you can get her back in the meeting. The next item is Eighty-eight Hazel, I could start the presentation. If you'd like.
Hello?
Oh, good. Thanks for coming back.
Oh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, all right. Yes, I'm back. Okay, so is my agenda gone? The next item for hearing is the, is 88 Hazel Avenue. Number 2218, if we could please have your staff report.
Let me share my screen. So this application is for a remodel, significant remodel at 88 Hazel Avenue. And the site is west of downtown in the hillsides and it's a really unusually shaped lot with a, a large street frontage on Hazel Avenue and surrounded by two other developed properties. 77 Laurel has a stretch of land that comes out on the west side of the site. And then 74 Hazel is the, the site that's been under construction a while at, immediately to the rear of the site. The project needs designer view and it also needs an exception permit or setback variance if they exceed the demolition that's allowed for an exception permit. In order to increase the height of a front corner that's in the front setback area, which I'll point out as we go through the plans. And then there's also a slope use permit required for grading that's required in order to construct a new garage site. What's come to my attention in reviewing the plans too is that there was no notice of an FAR exception, but the site does require a floor area exception. It complies with the floor area that would be required for the single family residential guidelines, but it, it exceeds what would be allowed for a sloped site. And so that's, we're recommending continuance. That would be another item, reason to continue the item tonight. I wanted to show this photo, what the site looked like before they built a retaining wall and large fence at the front of the site. It looks like they might have, the, the street view photos are showing maybe where the retaining wall was located. But that fence and the wall and any grading associated with that has not been shown on the plan. So we'd like the item to be continued also to to present the planning commission with that application for consideration, whether it's a fence height variance or or a fence exception. And then another, one of the comments that the fire department had provided the applicant was that the driveway be widened to 16 feet and that widening hasn't been shown on the plans. And so I wanted to show this picture to show that in order to widen the driveway eight feet towards the street, we do anticipate there'd be some sort of retaining wall required or maybe just additional grading in order to get that, that driveway to be widened to 16 feet. Here's another view of, they might have been stringing where the retaining wall is that appears to be sort of in this area at this height at the street. But I don't, unfortunately, I don't have a picture of what's, what's there right now. Again, for the site, the, the project involves really remodeling the existing structure and doing additions that are conforming to the setbacks. But I will point out that, so the allowable floor area that's allowed on a hillside site is 2,333. The existing residence already exceeds that and they're proposing to do an ADU, which would be excluded from the floor area ratio and then also additions that bring the site up to a point, point 6% FAR. So it's still below what would be allowed for an R1 site, but more than what would be allowed for a hillside site. The additions, this is the existing site. Again, we, I believe that the retaining wall that's out there might be along the front property line here. This is the existing driveway and it's not, the plans do not show it being widened. And then again, sorry, the existing residence that is at 88 Hazel, which has a garage at the lower level as well as I think what's shown is more of a guest area. A neighbor has indicated it might have been used or might be being used as a second unit. But the proposal includes constructing a new garage with a lawn area above it or a yard area, so expanding the flat yard area at the site and then making modifications to the house for a new entry addition and improving the driveway access and turnaround area. This is the new garage and entry area that's proposed. And then the rest of the, the elevations change in that all the materials and windows will be changed in the roofing material. But for the most part, the mass of the house stays somewhat similar with the exception of adding some, some more contemporary kind of elements to the, to the facade. Here's the rear elevation. So there's some modifications made to this portion of the house that's in the setback, but that, that is allowable with the, with the setback exception. And then this corner in the front here. This is where the, there's right currently the, like a bay window projection here. And what they're proposing to do is to square it off. And so that could be allowed with a floor area exception as so long as they maintain enough of the wall in that front setback area. If the demolition exceeds a certain amount, then a variance would be required. So I will have, if you're continuing the item, I would have some discussion with the architect and applicant to ensure that they'll be able to retain enough of the structure. And if not, we would recommend that they apply for variance for the modifications that are proposed. Again, because the site's on this corner a lot, I, I would support a variance application because I think it is an unusual situation to have so much frontage. And it actually in reality is, meets the intent of the setback regulations by being fairly far from the actual street, street edge. There's more elevations that they provided. And then this is an elevation that, sorry, a site plan that they provided tonight that shows where the driveway would be widened to 16 feet. They don't, there's no details for this. So like this, this contour is the same contour that's extending here. So I would imagine if, if the road was to be level, that at this point, there would be a short wall. Or they may be proposing to grade because we don't have that detail as to whether or not, what it would look like, whether or not it's being graded or not. I think it's reasonable through a designer view application for the planning commission to request that information, especially in the hillside area here where if, if a lot of, if more grading's involved, that would be something that the planning commission would be required to review as part of the slope permit. So what they're showing on this plan though, is that the driveway widening would not encroach onto the neighbor's site. The existing driveway encroaches onto 77 Laurel and we don't have any evidence of any written easement for that. But the proposed widening there would not exacerbate that condition. There was a neighbor, the owner or the daughter of the owner of 112 Hazel has come in to speak with us concerned that the driveway widening might impact their property. And according to the plans that are here, they don't propose to widen it to any extent that would impact their property. But I think, again, it's reasonable with, through a designer view application for the neighbors to see what, what will be proposed and what that work will entail. In addition, we'd like the fire department to ensure that the proposed plan meets their requirements and that they will be able to make this turn or if additional work would be needed if, or if they're expecting to, to make that turn. So staff is recommending that you continue the application. We'd like to provide notice of the floor area exception and then also to receive the plans for the driveway widening and also plans for the existing wall and fence that were built at the site so that we could determine if additional approvals are required for that wall and fence. So I'm recommending continuing the application and that concludes my staff report unless you have any conditions for me, or sorry, questions for me.
Thank you very much, Elise, for that very thorough report. Do we have any questions for staff?
I, I had a quick, a couple of quick questions. Can you go back to that site plan again?
Sure.
So I see the property line, I can't, I keep trying to use my arrow. I see the property line where Hazel is and is that, is that retaining wall on this, the edge of the street? Or is it on the property line?
Are you talking about the one here?
The one along, there's a retaining wall along here, is there not?
Oh, sorry, you're pointing again to something that I'm missing. Let me see.
Along Hazel or?
Do I have controls to draw? Just a second, let me see if I could draw at least.
Elise, just to follow up on Brock's question, when I went by the property to look at it today, I saw a tall fence. Does it run along that fence?
I think, so I don't know if you can see my pointer, Brock, but this is the front property line.
Ah, okay, okay.
So there's a, there is a distance between the, that's where, and that's why this, this section, the front setback is right here. So just a little tiny bit of that proposed addition is extending into the front setback. But it, but it meets a 20 foot, it's, it's 20 feet from the actual roadway. And then, so this parking area here is entirely in the right of way area.
Right.
And then the driveway is essentially mainly in the right of way area with just a portion being on the neighbor's site and then it's with a neighbor that came to speak with us with concerns that apparently the driveway used to come right off the street in front of the site in the right of way, but it was much steeper and that that's why, I guess, at some point they, they made a new driveway and right of way, but maybe they hadn't surveyed and ended up pressing the neighbor's site.
Okay, and, and if I'm looking at this drawing correctly, Hazel is gonna be about four feet, five feet less than the driveway width?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's not an unusual situation. Let me actually make, make sure that, let me make sure that there's, the fire department, sorry that I'd forgotten the fire department said they might attend this meeting. Maybe if there's someone in the audience from the fire department, let me know. If the chief said he might, or we've heard that chief might attend, he's not there, but but that, yeah, it's like, it's it may be, and it might have some factor to do with approaching the house on the driveway that's steeper too. Maybe it's, so unfortunately I can't speak with the fire department, but that is a requirement. And our project architect hopefully has spoken with them since that memo was prepared and may have additional information for you.
Okay, thanks.
So just to clarify, the fence that's, like, it looks new and it's very tall, that sits on the retaining wall?
The fence appears to sit on the retaining wall to me. And, and it appears in my mind that it's probably located along the front property line, but we don't know that since they haven't shown it on the plans.
Got it. Okay.
They are right next to the house with another giant retaining wall.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's up a hill, so any more questions for staff?
I will say though, which I didn't mention the staff report, that if you do go with the staff recommendation to continue it, I think it would be helpful to get any comments that you have on the design so that if, if this is coming back, that they could address those if you, if you do have any comments on the fence that's out there today and, or on the proposed design.
That's helpful. Thank you. So shall we invite the applicant and his or her architect to speak now?
Okay, I believe Scott Myers is the project architect and I'm promoting you to be a panelist so you could speak.
Hello?
Hi, we could hear you.
Okay, good. I, I was lost there for a second. Yes. So yeah, hi, Scott Myers with Chrome Architecture, the architects for the project. Just a few, a few discussion points about the things that Elise talked about. The first one is, you know, the extension or, you know, the, the variance for a non-conforming structure, which is that front corner that she talked about. The existing house already is in that, is already past the setback. And, you know, the portion that we would be extending it into is the can levered over the existing ground for exactly like you said, out to the front of where that existing bay window is up in that, you know, that front corner. So that part, I mean, I think that's pretty straightforward and pretty, you know, pretty much exactly how she, she described it. We, we actually did apply for an FAR expect, exception in our original application. I'm not sure if that didn't get, you know, indicated in the initial staff report. I think it might have been missed because, because it was just based on the R1 as opposed to the slope, you know, slope site as well. But that was part of the initial application, so I don't, I don't know if that can, you know, be, you know, looked at as part of, you know, the continuation if we're gonna go there. The, the big issue that I see obviously is the, the since-built wall that is not shown on the drawings because it was built after we submitted the drawings without the architect kind of knowing about it, but and it is, you know, I spoke with Doug Hendrickson and, and, you know, it was built on the property line. So that is, you know, and, and he's willing, you know, and able to provide the drawings and documentation for where that is. So I think, you know, as that goes forward, I believe, personally, I believe it's too tall. I think he knows that it exceeds the height and would, as part of the continuation or if we could, Elise, you and I had spoke about possibly separating that out from this part of it so that if, if we can get approval on the design, then we can have the, you know, the continuation just go for the disputed items, which would be great. So that, so that's, those are the kind of housekeeping things I think that, you know, that I just wanted to talk about after the staff report. As far as the design of the project goes, if we want to, you know, speak about that, talk about that, I'd be more than happy to. I mean, the main, the main thing was, you know, getting access from, you know, inside, a stairway inside from, you know, the driveway up to the main floor of the house. Because as it currently stands, there's, you know, there's a single car garage that is in the basement that is used for a very nice classic car and then storage. But they park in the, the existing driveway, which is very, you know, steep and sloped. And there's a stone stairway that comes up to the front porch that, you know, I'm sure in, you know, this type of season that we're coming into with the rain and everything is not very, very safe. So it's basically the enclosed stairway to get them, you know, from the new garage to the inside of the house. And then obviously to, to improve the home. The views out, you know, over Hazel are obviously amazing. And right now there are just a few windows there. So it was, you know, the big kind of, you know, idea was to open up as much of that front of the house as possible, you know, to get views out. So that's if we wanted to go back to the, either the, you know, the renderings or to the elevations themselves, we could look at those. Do I have access to share screen?
Yes, you should, you should, if you want to share anything.
Okay. I can go. It says who's disabled screen sharing. It doesn't say I have access to the screen share.
I think you have to give.
Here you go, try again.
Okay. Okay, so can look at, you want to just look at the elevations? So obviously down here we have the existing home elevation. And like I said, there's, you know, only a few windows along that whole front side. And that is, you know, looking out over to my Tam and over to, you know, over Hazel. And so it's, you know, it was our imperative to, to, you know, open all of that up and to have, you know, the living spaces in the master bedroom, which is over here to be able to, you know, to which is over here, um, to be able to, you know, to take advantage of all the, that, that view. And then, you know, we extended this deck, um, out to here, and this is also cannoli rid off. Because we know that, that the slope drops off pretty quickly right, uh, outside of this part. And, and then the, you know, the new garage, uh, and then the stair tower, uh, coming in the wide. And then this would be the back of the home. Uh, and then, so here we have the, the renderings for that. So the driveway comes up. Uh, and then, you know, entry into the house, there'll be a couple of steps up here from the driveway just to make up for the slope. Um, opening this corner up, cause you know, it's all about the views on that second floor. And then the existing home has inside of, you know, some vaulted ceilings with rafters and deans that we would, we would keep. Into, in with this room here, which is the living room, uh, and have like a small, like little library or music room in the corner. And then some screening for the neighbors, now that that could be seen in there, and then the backside. And then obviously this is, you know, looking out the front. So any comments or questions?
I just had a Scott, just a quick question. The, the entry to the ADU is one of the French doors or?
Yeah, so on the, the ADU, this first part of, of the downstairs here is part of the residence. That's like a, just like a, you know, and so, yeah, so the entrance to the ADU would be through these doors here in the middle.
Okay, I suspected as much.
Yep.
Do we have any more questions for the architect?
I've got one. Um, is the cannoli wood and deck, I guess, in the front of the top elevation? They're extending into the setback, the side yard setback. I know a corner of the properties, uh, that'd be over on the, the right side of this top image is, um, that is the, that can land wooden deck as well.
Yeah, so if you, we look here, uh, the entire deck is actually in it, um, as even the existing deck and that has, that is on the house right now. So this shows where the existing deck is here, this, you know, there's a note there. So this portion that is new would also be in the setback. But there, you know, there's a, an allowance for a certain amount of architectural, uh, um, you know, cannoli into the setback. Um, I mean, we're more than that because we're already, the building itself is partially setbacks. So that's part of the, you know, the done performing request.
Okay, thanks.
Any, anything else? Um, okay, hearing none, do, will, is the, um, applicant also present to make any comments? Or are we just hearing from the architect tonight?
I don't believe they are, but it's possible they, they've come.
I don't see any hands raised.
Yeah.
In that case, um, let's, um, see if there's anyone in the audience that would like to ask any questions or make any comments. And just a reminder, if you have comments, please keep into three minutes and I already see a hand up.
Okay, I'm gonna call on Patty Jordan. You should be able to unmute your mic and speak.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, thanks.
My name's Patty Jordan and my family purchase built and has lived at one with twelve Hazel since nineteen sixty-four. We're well versed in the history and recent changes that have happened in our neighborhood. Um, I've organized my comments, uh, similar to how the Larkspur Planning Staff Report was. The one that we stayed to November twenty-second. I feel the site description should be a little bit modified. I differ that the description is heavily wooden, wooden, because significant clearing has already been done. Description should state that the bottom studio has been in a separate rental unit for over forty years. Should include detail and not knowing you were gonna present more information in tonight's plan, I asked for detailed description of where property line is, public right of way, and any other easements or encroachments. Stated that the house is accessed via driveways which cross two adjacent parcels. And also what goes into the site description is a new existing condition, which is a hundred and eighty foot plus long combination retaining wall and fence, which looks to be about twelve feet tall. And there were no permits for this. Something as massive and as tall should have been part of this project plan. And a discussion, no matter how many times you say it or who says it, this project design is not consistent with the existing neighborhood character. It does resemble the most recent two to three projects around Larkspur, the Larkspur Laurel Hazel Loop, but that's it. The proposed house may be pleasant, but the neighborhood as a whole is not known for blocky structures with glass covered sides, just setting the record straight. Uh, discussion of windows and glass doors adding visual interest, the proposed street frontage has approximately sixty percent or more glass as compared to non-reflective surface, that's greatly increased from the current amount of glass. The home will be continued to be screened by existing native trees and shrubbery on and around the property. Well, that's not the case, as there was clearing. And now there is this new very tall fence that we're looking at, which magically became part of the existing conditions and dominates the view not. There was no discussion or permits requested. Previous owner had to attain encroachment permits just for day work to the trees in the right of way. And you already know that that little parking retaining wall offsite's gonna pass for an encroachment license agreement. What makes them think that this monstrous barricade wouldn't have required some discussion or approval? He knows the sheer mass alone would trigger some discussion. If a survey was done, that information needs to be verified and filed with the city so we can all see it. I'm not gonna trust some random line drawn on the plan that shows that his driveway isn't already a little bit on our property as it looks like it from Marin maps. I've heard one of the reasons why this big wall was for soundproofing and was there an acoustical study done that confirmed that there's an extensive sustained period of over eighty decibels? Suggesting a need for sound wall along our sleepy little Hazel Avenue? I don't think so. If so, he wouldn't have promoted, proposed a depth to extend further into the noise. I've also heard that this barricade system ties back into the grade and is adjustable should the wall or fence start to bow out away from the house. I sure hope he leaves instructions on how to tighten up this wall for future owners, as well as his forwarding contact information and insurance policy. I feel that this was a very sneaky and calculated move on the owner's cap. Do not grant him any more non-conforming elements. The Larkspur Public Works Building and Central Marin Fire Authority have reviewed the project and have no comments beyond the established standard. Well, we, we just discussed that the fire department mentioned that you have to widen the driveway to sixteen feet. And, you know, forever eighteen eighty-eight Hazel has absolutely dominated the city, by the way, in front of three parcels. It's really not fair to allow further favors to one at the expense of everyone else. The driveway used to be quite flat in front of the neighboring parcels in the early seventies, but its elevation was raised substantially and became the focal element of the local view. The city of Larkspur stated in more than one place that there are not in favor of extensive retaining walls. This harkens back to the lengthy unapproved retaining wall fence combo barricade that was just installed. How does the Larkspur Fire Department feel now that there is eighteen thousand plus square feet of combustible wood inside the defensible space? The Public Works letter, item one states that seeing Hazel Avenue just received its longer weighted paving, there is a moratorium per prohibition on trenching and excavation. If exception to this is granted, this trenching better not be within the fire season as an unencumbered Hazel Avenue is crucial for providing a second way out for the hundreds of people up from Joan Canyon in the event of an evacuation emergency. Public Works item number two provides, provides details for construction management plan, and I would like to stipulate that the storage staging location, materials, equipment, portable toilets, soil boxes, debris and waste bins all be kept on their property and not within the right of way easement. Public Works item four requests that plan should be labeled as public. Now I'm a little confused here because I thought the requirement was for the ADU renters and guests as a mitigation measure. But wouldn't it be better to label that actual parking space as public? As things are now, that parking area is one hundred percent taken by eighty-eight Hazel Residence Work Vehicle and Tool Trailer. Not much public about that. The fire department should be conferred about the exact location and length of that parking area. In previous years, the department had come around to spray painted appropriate spots, given the width requirements for their response vehicles. The area that was selected was not in front of our parcel, which also happens to be less in view than it is now with resident parks. The department also installed a sign in front of that sprayed parking that stated you're entering restricted parking area. Parking in zones only designated by white lines, violators will be subject to towing and hundred dollar fine. A previous member, a previous renter at eighty-eight Hazel backed into the sign but kept it on the ground. The current owner got rid of the sign altogether, seeing as limited and trailer parking in front of our parcel, also saves him a bunch of fines. This is just another blatant sign of disrespect toward governing officials and regulations. Public items works identified provide evidence of legal rights to construct driveway improvements on neighboring parcel seventy-seven. Like I said, I want to see a survey and I want to make sure that they're not in our property. Absolutely no more encroachment towards a property will be withstood. Building Department requires their conditions of approval include grading drainage utility brush control sediment control plans, geotechnical investigation, topographic survey. Absolutely, all of these affected properties need to be included in this, in these plans and studies. This should have also been included for that recent retaining wall and spence work that was done on the frontage. The Chrome Architect Statement of Required Findings, uh, letter two fourteen. The plan accounts for a needed extra parking for proposing a paved area at the street for guest parking. That doesn't really sound like much of a mitigation measure to pay and wall your personal parking space. How about instead you keep twenty-three feet of the existing garage under the house and give that to the ADU tenant? That sounds more generous. The architect repeats several times how the bulk of the structure is compatible with the neighborhood. And that may be, but he really doesn't mention the fact that the summation of all the proposed glass appears to be more than sixty percent of the street elevation. How much of an increase is this over the existing house? The architect states that the main focus of design is outward views. Well, this equals glass. There's a lot of glare from a long Mount Tam sunsets at night and has potential for more than sixty percent of the house to be lit up with interior lights for all to see. Modern houses often have great rooms with limited interior wall space and therefore, when one space is used, the light is seen throughout. This is the case for the top north floor of the house. No one thinks about how this glass home will look at night. Nighttime lighting needs to be mitigated with site-specific measures. It seems to be new fad now to put recessed exterior lights underneath the east. Authorities seem to be under the impression that this is a one-time fiddle measure that does not work for homes that are elevated above their surroundings.
Three, sorry, the three minutes are up to see now.
I, I'm almost done. May I continue? I will stop about the lighting. My concluding thought, please. Nowhere, nowhere has the history of the parcel been discussed. Eighty-eight Hazel was a horse barn for Judge Mahoney's seventy-four Hazel. There about four to five pages in the large past impression that talk about the judge and this architect. Eighty-eight Hazel was the site of a little barn on top of the steep knoll. This may be the reason why the site feels so physically restricted. It was never in a state lot. The criteria for the Larkspur Municipal Code says a proposed structure should be designed to fit the site and not vice versa. As such, the project proponent should stop comparing his proposal, especially his grading and recent retaining wall fence to those that were approved as his neighbor's recent remodel. Each project has a unique set of physical conditions and parameters and needs to be studied independently. What was approved next door does not necessarily provide you approval. Just remember, just remember that he signed the city's identity agreement for the city's decision. While different from the neighborhood, this design is pleasant, but it can be improved for consideration of the effects of the, of the neighborhood and reduce the amount of glass. Metal roof should be non-glare earth color. Provision of one ADA parking at the existing garage should be incorporated in plans and no additional non-conforming anything should be allowed in the right of way. The owner needs to stop making changes to his property, including grading, structures and drainage, to fit his proposed remodel narrative and respect the Larkspur authorities, the review process, timelines and their decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, for your comments. We appreciate them. Um, I do want to remind, um, everyone to please, please keep within the, the time limits because we won't be able to get through everything and I know there's many people who want to have their application heard tonight. Um. But thank you. Do you have anyone else who would like to make a comment?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, great. Um, in that case, I'd like to bring it back to the commission for deliberations. Um, and could we have, um, Commissioner Swisher, why don't we have you go first, please?
Um, well, I think that given the staff report that there's a lot of things on this, uh, on this proposal that need some answers, specifically some of the uh, issues addressed by Ms. Jordan there regarding the property lines and the encroachments and various other things. I think it's gonna be very difficult for us to make any findings tonight regarding this until some of these questions are answered and until the project does have, uh, a, um, update to the, uh, wall that is there, uh, that is not on, you know, it's not on the, uh, the plans is uh, or in the pictures that we saw of the street. So I think that, yeah, my, I guess I would make a motion that we need to continue this and, uh, just stop discussion or not have further discussion uh, until some of these issues are addressed as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Com- um, Commissioner Waxstaff, no comments?
Um, I agree that there's a lot of, uh, items that, uh, I'd like resolved or at least, uh, illuminated. Particularly, uh, the retaining wall, which is the sort of, is, is a pretty, uh, big element along there. And, and whether the driveway, uh, I, you know, is obviously over the neighbor's property at this point. I would, I would say that from my perspective, it's a nice design. I like the design. I think the deck is probably larger than it needs to be and should be sort of looked at. I, I don't think you need a deck that comes off of every place, but, um, I think it, it, it has some things that need to be resolved before we could vote on approval or disapproval.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Campbell, if we could have your comments, please too.
Yeah, um, I, I agree that there are some, some outstanding things that I think we should get some clarity on before we, uh, vote.
Yeah, I, thank you, thank you. Um, yeah, and for myself, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. Um, it seems like there's a lot here that, um, we need answers on. And there were some items addressed in the report that we need to, that need to be, um, I think, addressed in, in, in a further response from the applicant. Um, just a couple of things, I do, I do actually like the design. I think it's, um, I, I'd like it. I think, I think, um, it's, it's very pleasant and I do think it's actually appropriate for the site and the neighborhood. Um, I do want to acknowledge the comments in, um, uh, Ms. Jordan's, uh, commentary. I mean, a lot of those issues I'm hoping will be, um, looked at and addressed by the applicant. I think the big issue is also, also the, the driveway and, um, the fence. I did see the fence when I went by there today and it is very, very tall and it's not particularly, so just as a helpful comment, I, I don't see any reason why that can't be shortened, cause it's not overlooked by any neighbors. And that may just, um, make that fence height exception go away if it can comply with, um, the code on the fence. Uh, so those, that was really my only comments on that. Um, so I think we can, uh, I can request a motion, please. Oh, Liam.
I've got actually something. Um, I don't know if I'm allowed to go out of order like this. Um, for, I think it's for staff. Um, can we? Um, for, I think it's for staff. Um, can we have the fire department comment on the, the parking space that, that our public commenter brought up, uh, about the space that the fire department needs to get by that, uh, street parking space, I think.
Yeah.
That might be good to have their input on.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. And I see that a comment.
I agree with what Liam said on the, particularly because Hazel is so narrow, um, at that point. And people tend to not park always in parking spots that well, so. Important.
Yeah, that's very, that's a very good comment. So thank you for raising that. Um, I do see a comment. Scott Myers has his hand up. Yeah.
Um, Mr. Myers, yeah.
Just, just a, a quick, just, I, I'm not gonna, you know, argue about any of the, the, you know, says, but there, there was a survey that was submitted as part of the application, so, um, the, uh, you know, the driveway is located per the survey. Everything is surveyed correctly. Um, so that's just, I just wanted to say that because there, there seemed to be some question as to or some non-believing of the drawings themselves, but the, there's an actual survey submitted uh, with the application that shows, and these are all based upon that, so, um, that would, I just wanted to say that. That's all.
I, I guess, Mr. Myers, I think the question is, is with the 16-foot, uh, will that still be the case? Um, because it, being done clear in the staff report, if that was going to be the case, because the, the plans is, is they are drawn, at least as I see them, don't, uh, address the actual, uh, driveway as proposed with the 16-foot that the fire department's recommending. So that's, I guess, I mean, there's just, that's why there's a lot of questions, uh, I think that.
No, no, uh, yeah, like I, uh, I, I had the, the discussion with the lease about that and I had only, I mean, we had seen that part of the, you know, of the report. And, you know, kind of were based on the initial staff report from the, you know, the, the plan November 22nd meeting as being approved with conditions. Uh, we were taking that as, you know, the 16-foot as being conditioned to, you know, when we went in for permit, that that's what we were going to do. And until, you know, the revised staff report was issued late last week, you know, that was under, we were under the same impression that, you know, this meeting was going to be based on the, the initially, you know, initial staff report. Um, so when, you know, like when we saw that, I, you know, I said, sent over just kind of like a draft plan uh, that we looked briefly at, uh, with, uh, police, uh, you know, kind of showing where that would go, you know, just, you know, obviously not drawn by a surveyor or civil engineer, but just me, you know, kind of throwing a 16 feet onto that. Uh, you know, just to, to, to make sure that we were still, that we were, weren't going to be encroaching on any neighboring property other than the Laurel prod, property, which, you know, we already encroach upon, which, you know, I've requested from, uh, the, you know, the homeowner, if they do have any written agreement, uh, just haven't received any confirmation, but, um, so that, you know, it does show, you know, the, a draft of what that might look like um, on, uh, you know, a PDF that I sent to the lease, uh, today, so, uh, it, right, I mean, I understood there, there are other issues that need to be resolved before, uh, for the next continuance, so that's, that will be part of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Myers. If there's no further comments, um, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
So our options are to continue to, uh, date, uh, unknown?
Uncertain.
That's what I would recommend since we don't know when they will submit, resubmit plans.
Okay, I will move to, um, to continue, I, uh, ADI Hazel Avenue, uh, at number 2218, um, to a date undetermined.
Second.
Do we need a roll call? I guess we need a roll call.
Yeah, let me call the roll. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson is absent tonight, so the motion passes.
All right, thank you. Um, so moving on now to, um, 2217, uh, 49 Locust Avenue. Could we please have the staff report? Thank you.
Hey. 49 Locust Avenue is a application for designer view. It's, the site is located just west of the downtown area in a multifamily zone, the R3 zone, where 60%, uh, like point six FAR is allowed and presumably because they were allowing additional floor area for multifamily development. This is the site close to downtown and it used to consist of two buildings, uh, the front residence as well as the second residence at the rear that were combined at some point since, um, the proper, I think, prior to the property sale, because I think on the resales, but as I could see the, the house had been combined, but, um, it did, it was two homes before, uh, the, the project needs designer view for the second story addition and it also needs an exception permit in order to modify an existing wall that's in the north side yard setback. The project complies otherwise with the development regulations and at the proposed 44% floor ratio is below the point six that's allowed in the district. And this is in a, uh, the existing lower level floor plan has a low six-foot ceiling height and it's basically, um, similar to a crawl space, low crawl space area. And then the second house that was in the back, um, there was two bedrooms that were, there was an addition added, I think 2013, um, to increase the size of these bedrooms that were associated with the, the house in the back. And then there's a garage and carport that, um, they're proposing to demolish as part of this project. So the proposed lower level would increase the ceiling height of some of the basement area and create a new garage off the side of the house. It's not adequate, I think, for two cars to get into, but it's, um, so it's sort of an oversized one-car garage, but would have room for pi- parking and bicycles and storage and things. And then, um, a new office is proposed to the rear of the proposed garage. And then the, the crawl space area, um, would also be improved for additional living space in the laundry room at the lower level and then no significant changes are proposed to the existing veterans downstairs. This is the floor plan, the last floor plan that the city approved for the site. Uh, so the kitchen was located at the front residence and then there was a wall that separated the two, the two structures, um, at some point, and I don't know if a permit would have been required. Um, the wall was removed between the two structures and I, this, I think this front kitchen was removed. I believe this, the second kitchen that still remains at the site. Um, and then what was, um, considered, shown as a living room for the second home, um, has been converted to a master bedroom. And so what the applicants are proposing to do would be to retain the master bedroom at the back of the site, but modify the floor plan to, um, create a connection between the two structures with full ceiling height space and, um, at the, both the upper and the lower level. And then they're proposing, uh, the, because their height, this, the homes are at different heights. There's some stairs that would come down to the, uh, family room of the, the front portion of the residence. Oh, let me point out too. So you'll see here, there's a roof line, so the existing structure uh, is in the side setback, um, but and I'm sorry, the lower level, the existing structures in the side setback, the proposed structure, um, is or the existing structure remains in the side setback, the proposed structure has been pulled back to comply with the setback requirement. So right now, this, there's an existing little pocket of, um, oh, I hope I'm not pointing the wrong spot. There's a pocket that was pulled in before for the addition that was done in 2013. And, um, in order to not, to avoid a requirement for variance, the applicants pulled the, the whole second floor wall back to comply. On the other side of the site, the, the project meets the, the side setback. This is the elevations of the existing residents. Uh, this is the area that I was referring to. That was, it's sort of a, a, uh, it was pulled in for, for a prior addition. And then you'll note that although this, these are both two-story structures, the lower level of both structures are, are low ceiling height spaces, so, um, they don't have full height space, but what's being proposed, um, is, is a full height two-story structure, so it does project, um, taller than the existing roofs and they've tried to combine, um, or pull it, they pulled, tried to minimize the impact to the neighbor by having hip, hip roof forms, um, although with it's, I will say it's comp, there's no consistency in roof lines, but it would be difficult to make something consistent in roof lines because there are a lot of roof lines going on with the existing residences, too. And this is the proposed front elevation, the second story is setback, um, or the proposed addition is setback much farther from the street than the existing residence in the front. And then here's a side elevation, which again is showing that the, the, the new two-story addition was, um, sort of more in keeping with, uh, standard construction, but it's trying to connect together to, um, residences that have a really low, lower level ceiling height. And then this is a wall that faces the neighbor, uh, but the neighboring home, um, it, it preserves the privacy of the neighboring home by not having any windows, but it does result in an elevation that is, um, rather plain on this, this side. And then here's a rendering of what the residence would look like with the addition. The neighbor to the north has written with, and expressed concerns, you've received copies of that correspondence and their concern with the mass of the structure at their window and, um, they believe the existing residence already is, um, quite a long structure along their property line and this would exacerbate that condition. The, you'll note in the story polls, um, the story polls were installed and apparently that, that polls themselves were too tall or rep, misrepresented the proposed addition, so the tape that's been installed, um, represents the height of what's proposed. And I, we can let the applicant comment as to whether or not this represents the, I believe this represents the initial height and not the revised height, but, um, I would let the applicant actually explain if that's the case, this, that the poles are, have remained the same height, but the tape was, was modified. Um, I wanted to note that it, one of the designer findings, um, does include views, but it does say that, um, the finding that has to be made is that the structure or the addition avoids significant and unreasonable loss or interference with privacy, light, solar access and prominent scenic views. And they note, um, the prominent scenic views, uh, examples of those are views of hillsides, Mount Tullipias and San Francisco Bay from primary living areas. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the project. We believe there's facts to make the findings for uh, approval of the designer view application and also for the setback exception to modify the lower level um, wall to make it a little bit higher and change the windows on that elevation. And we're recommending approval of the project subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report. And that concludes my staff report unless you have any con, or sort of questions for me. And I, the, the applicant is here and I intend to present more information on the design, so, um, if it's related to the project, you might want to wait to hear more about, um, to see the applicant's presentation.
Thank you very much, Elise. Um, I actually did have one question. I, I noticed, uh, in the memo that you had attached, uh, from the Public Works Department. It had, um, stated it was incomplete for processing. Uh, is this something which we need to look at or can this be just handled even if we approve or allow this project to be, to, to go through, so?
In my review of the conditions, they appeared to be ones that could be addressed at the building permit level. So there were a number of items identified that would be, um, somewhat typical comments for them to provide at the building permit stage, including a more detailed drainage plan, um, and, and they had a, a number of other conditions, but they were items that typically would be received when detailed drawings are prepared for the building permit.
Great, thank you.
And, uh, water, I think one was also a water conserving landscape plan. I don't think that the applicants are proposing to add significant landscaping, um. And so there's, I, at, at least I haven't noticed anything that might be required to be removed as part of a water efficient landscape plan.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, does anyone else have questions for staff? No. In that case, can we invite the applicant or their architect to make a comment and again, reminding them to please limit any presentation to 10 minutes?
You should be able to unmute, Mr. Walsh.
There it is. Okay, great. Can everyone hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Perfect, great. So I, Brian Walsh here. I'm, I'm the owner of, uh, 49 Locust with my wife, Sophie. Um, as Elise has said, this is the, uh, the 3D rendering of the project and, you know, when we thought, what we thought would be helpful for the commission, for the commissioners would be, uh, to provide a little context on this, you know, starting with introduction. So we do live here in Larkspur. Uh, we bought this house in the middle of 2021. Uh, we're a four-family, uh, four-person family. My wife, Sophie, is a local family photographer. She does a lot of wonderful work for community members. Uh, we have two, uh, today, they're sick. We have two sick, uh, kids. Uh, they both go to Neil Cummins. Um, Sophie does quite a bit of work at the, at the Spark and the PTO program. And, uh, and for me, I, my career 20 years is going on mitigating climate change and, and, uh, you know, one of the, one of the many things that I personally love about Larkspur is that there's a growing community of professionals that are working on trying to mitigate climate change. And so first, first things first, uh, you know, the design, the design that we're proposing is code compliant in all areas. Uh, and so the, the pro, the proposed addition meets all setbacks. Uh, the roof is below the maximum allowed height by eight feet. Uh, the design is far below the FAR, um, and below the building coverage guidelines. Um, and I think, Elise, you, you did a, a wonderful job. This is, this is a tricky house. This has a lot of complexity. So we've spent a, an incredible amount of time, uh, in many different, uh, versions, many different design approaches. And, uh, we're really excited about where we landed. But the house today, um, it has many levels, right? So you've got the split level in the rear and it's partially underground. This is the grade line. And then you have the original house that is a single story with a, you know, a six-foot, five-foot high, uh, crawl space. And so it's hard to look at this and say, how do we integrate this? And then you layer on top of that, that there's no laundry room in the original house and there's no integrated garage in, in this house. And so these are all things that we worked really hard to, to address. And in its simplest terms, the approach we took is to extend the split level, um, design forward a little bit. And what you get on top is the modern living space. This is where the new kitchen goes, the living room and the dining room. And then under it, because you're now raising that, uh, the bottom height a bit, you can now have, finish that with eight-foot ceilings. And this is where you have a nice space for the laundry room. This is also, because this is now coming, uh, south. This is now where you get the integrated garage. And we're also going to, uh, improve the front of it. So anyway, a lot, fairly complex design. Um, and I think we've, we've solved a lot of the, the objectives we had with this approach. And we think it matches the neighborhood aesthetic very well. So our immediate neighbors, um, you know, we would say to our best judgment are all two stories or all two levels anyway. I think most of them are two stories. I think on the north side, you know, the bottom is a garage, uh, level and then the top. And so they may call their house a single story, but it's two levels. And the point is that the houses that exist today, while complex and difficult to modernize, it also, it, you know, the two neighboring houses do tower over it. Our house has a much lower, uh, uh, street presence than, than, uh, than the neighbors. And I would argue that, you know, our design is the least bulky approach to achieving that neighbor. And I would argue that, you know, our design is the least bulky approach to achieving that neighbor, that neighborhood aesthetic, right? So there might be three primary ways to to achieve this. The first you might say, hey, let's let's add a second story. A second story on to the main level, so the main level is here, so this is story one. And then you add a second story on top of that, this is the same height as this modern uh new addition here. And you get something close to the maximum height allowed. You know, certainly doable within guidelines, but this would be bulky, this would be far bulkier than what we're proposing today. Secondly, we could demo the entire house. And build something from scratch on grade, and so this is the grade line. We probably have it higher, allow a little bit more room for a crawl space, but nevertheless, if you do the same measurements, we have something higher than what we're proposing today. And so we really do think that the design we're coming to you with. Is quite clever, leveraging a lot of the neat aspects of this complicated existing structure. But also it uh it gives the house some street presence, but also it's the least bulky approach, and so trying to be mindful of our neighbors. And bring this to life a little bit, the actual house. You know, this is the high point of our house today, this is the high point of the design, the difference between these two is three feet, six inches. So it's really not raising the structure uh significantly at all. And relative to our two immediate neighbors, these are the story pulls, and yes. Um, the story pull ribbons were too high in that picture from their north side neighbor, they were brought down about four feet. Um, when when our architect corrected that, uh but this is accurate, and so we're still about six feet below. Our north side neighbors um uh uh peak measurement, we're also going to be lower than our south side neighbor. So we're not proposing a design where we then sort of um become higher to our adjacent properties, where in fact will remain lower. Through this process, we've engaged all um all of our immediate neighbors, we predominantly got very favorable feedback, design looks great. Happy to support you however we can, I like it and support the design, happy you're going to improve it. As was mentioned, we have received from concerns from the north side neighbors around uh shade, so raising the structure having an impact on sunlight onto their property. As well as a peek-a-boo uh view from a side window. And so we've made several, I would argue, several significant concessions for them within design, so we used to have a gable roof because. That matched architecturally the rest of the house. We've now gone with a hip roof to reduce bulk, which is a little bit of an odd architectural feature, because all the other roofs on this house are are gable roofs. Impact to us less volume inside in important areas, this is the kitchen, this is the living room. And it's also more expensive to build, so that's number one, number two. We moved further away from the north side property line, right? So the initial uh tendency was to just carry this um this wall up. Give ourselves some more kitchen space, but now we're going to honor the setback. Make it simpler and also move away from the property line to give them more space, right? Impact to us in smaller living spaces. We also. Did a a a professional shadow study to quantify this, so I, you know, what really will be the impact. And really two findings from this, number one, shade is cast on both properties, this is not a one-house thing. You know, they shade, they cash shade on our property at certain times and we cash shade on their property at certain times. Relative to the current, relative to the design. And the current house as it exists, there is actually no meaningful difference in shade. So that's the headline takeaway that there's no impact, and we actually did this for the hip design roof of our design as well as the gable roof design. And there was no significant impact to their north side neighbors uh throughout the year. So um, you know, we we hundred percent agree with the staff report, uh it's reasonable, it's well-placed, they're noting it will not impact neighbors, uh the neighboring properties, they're na- they're noting. Height and design are consistent with the existing area, we certainly agree. And so we're very excited about this project, we've tried to be very um. Empathetic, we've tried to be very considerate, not only with our own goals to create a modern house where we want to stay in for a long period of time. But also with our neighbors, right? And so just, you know, quick points to summarize, you know, the design complies with all codes, including parking setbacks and coverage. The design is the least bulky approach to modernizing and meeting the neighborhood aesthetic. Uh, we've received predominantly positive support from many neighbors and the staff report is recommending an approval. And so we have a lot more to share, but with the ten minutes allowed, I'll I'll leave it at that and and happy to answer questions.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No, um. Do you have your architect that is going to make any comments or?
We do, we do have Dignit Delaney. He's done a lot of work in the area. See on?
It's not necessary, but this if you just wanted to make sure you have the opportunity.
I think he's on and he's he's here to answer questions if we get technical questions.
Great. Um. I have one question, but I think what I'd like to do is hear the um. Members of the audience first, I see um, I think one hand up. That perhaps we can um.
I'm going to call on the hand up. Who is uh just a moment? Eric Wilder is, um we're going to allow you to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Wider, sorry. Yes, we can.
Hear me okay? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for having this, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here, I'm here with my wife Wendy Greenberg and my son, Kai Wadera. Um, I do really hope and I empathize for our our new neighbors and I hope they have a chance to build and live in their dream house, I also hope the committee takes into our account. That our house matters too, um our light, our view of the mountain. Um, and um not having a house that's built railroaded right on that property line going all the way front and back to the house. Encourage anybody to come to our house fifty-one Locusts, walk it to the back and you'll see what we have to deal with, a little bit of history, I promise I'll end in three minutes. Our house was built in eighteen eighty-eight, we bought it twelve years ago. Again, um like our new neighbors, very involved in our community, um. Nine years ago, we were in this exact same position, uh where it was the more expedient thing to do just to build. Mass and bulk on our side of the property, and that's what happened, and thank you for presenting that, our neighbor. You know, tried to build up and out initially and the city said no thankfully. Um, that they couldn't build up, they did allow two additions extending the house west. Adding that additional addition and adding, actually punching out that area where the current bathroom is, this was noted in the previous presentation, so adding more bulk. To our side of the house, that rear bathroom area, so. For the last nine years, we've been dealing with this Balkan mass that's been added to this side. Um, uh, so now we're back into that same position, having to argue yet again. That you just can't build up and up on our side of the property, which again, the city said no nine years ago. Just because it's the expedient thing to do doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. Can invite anybody to come to our backyard and see what we're dealing with, with as far as bulk and mass. Now, our house is a single-story house, walk to the backside, there is no doubt, there's no story underneath. Our front yard, our garage is dug out, so if you walk into our garage, it's below grade, it's dug out, so it is a single-story house. I don't think you quite get the size of the bulk and mass unless you actually walk into our backyard. And see what we're dealing with on that side, which is very hard to see from these drawings and the renderings because you just see the front. I think the last thing I just want to highlight is like you walk into, and it's similar to the very first presentation, you walk. Around the neighborhood like we do every single day and you can see. That most new additions that are approved are not just approved, you have a second story on the six-foot setback. They're actually setback farther from that six-foot that uh setback, that second story. This is building that second story right on that six-foot setback, so now we are, we're seeing. You know, more than two stories going all the way up, yes, our house is built on, we're above. So there's a slope, so there's a hill going both directions, so our house is actually not that tall, but it's on a hill. So um, you know, I I'm gonna, I know I recognize we're on in three minutes, so I I just want to say this last thing. You know, sometimes what's best for the homeowner or what's most ex- expedient, it's not what's best for the community and certainly not to what's best for the neighbors. Again, when I look at this, I see Balkan mass, I've been in a similar situation as our new neighbor, but three years ago, we actually um. Had to deal with this with our house, we had to build new windows in our front, new stairs because our stairs were rotting. And I s- I empathize with our new neighbor about the frustrations about having to deal with all of this stuff because we had to go to the city a lot and back and forth. And it was frustrating and maddening, partly because we have, the house is eighteen eighty-eight, it's a heritage house, it's um. But in the end, the process worked out, I am so happy with how it turned out because the process. Of making sure everybody's voices is heard about what's best for the community and not what is just expedient. For the homeowner, so I just like to end with that is, again, encourage anybody come walk into our backyard. We'll give you a tour anytime and just see the Balkan mass that we have to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Wadera. Do we have um? I see the applicant's hand is up again, um. Is, do we go back to the applicant now or do we wait for all the rest of the comments to be heard?
I I would suggest hearing if there's anyone else from the public that wants to speak and then allowing the applicant. A moment if they want to respond.
Okay. I actually don't see any.
I don't see any other hands raised to speak. Would you like to hear from the applicant?
Yes, let's let's definitely hear from him.
It might be a little delay there. Okay, you should be allowed, or you should be able to unmute your mic now.
Yeah, no, yeah, appreciate um ju- just uh some quick final thoughts, um. You know, no- nothing, we, we didn't make any designs that were expedient, I think that's a mischaracterization of what I was trying to present. But to be honest, I I we really wish we had come here with full neighbor support, um and we fully understand change can be difficult. Um, yeah, we made a number of concessions trying to uh show good faith towards our north neighbors, uh north, north side neighbors that. You know, we're willing to make concessions and to to make this right, but yet, you know, we also need to do, um, we also need to build a house that's cohesive and modern for us, and the house. As it exists, it's not a simple thing to do. Um, and so where we landed. Again, not solving for expediency, but solving for ourselves, solving for the property and then solving for the community. Uh, we feel strongly that our design is the least bulky approach and making that cohesive house that we want to live in for a long time, but also meeting the neighborhood aesthetic. And just case in point, if we demoed the entire house. The impact to our north side neighbors would certainly be greater. Not only in bulk, but certainly in environment. With waste and materials and timelines, right? And I think that can't be lost, and so lastly, you know, as I understand it, the design review standard is is not that there is not impact to neighbors. It is that there is reasonable impact, and I have to say, you know, my understanding is that there are other views within their house. You know, losing, losing a peek-a-boo view is 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 not easy. But you know, it's not the only view they have in their house, and I think we've made concessions, not only in the sunlight, but a bunch of other areas, we've really tried to bend over backwards.
Thank you. So I I did have one question, um especially about the applicants on on the line, um. But I'm wondering if the issues may have gone away is um. Was regarding the view, I mean, I did, I do want to always, I would like to acknowledge any uh people who make comments and say we do read them, we do read all the letters, we do. Uh, take them into account, so so thank you so much to any participants who make comments and anyone who writes in. Um, the the one question I had though was um on the the picture with the view. Is that still an open issue? Um, because I went. If it sounds like the store polls were actually higher than they should have been. And when I went down to have a look at this property, it it's hard to see sort of the back and I did try and see it from the side and it looked to me that the new house. Was going to be the forty-nine Locusts, the height was sort of the same level as the. I think it's the the shingle house next door, so the further house, so they were actually the same level, so I wasn't quite sure what was getting blocked exactly, but it was hard for me to see. So I'm putting it out there, I'm not really sure who's the right person to answer that, whether it's the.
On the on the story pole, I I can answer on the story pole, so that picture. When we put up the story poles. The the contractor did the best they could, and I imagine this is how you put up story poles, they do your best and then talk to the architect to make sure the levels are accurate. The levels were not accurate, they're four feet too high. And so after the next morning, they they lowered it, but but as Elise said, that, you know, the the wood remained the same, so it's sort of wood, but you've got to look at the ribbons and the ribbon placement. In that picture, the north side neighbors are using is during that short period of time where those ribbons were four feet or so too high.
Okay, I see. I see. I see a couple of hands up, so go ahead.
Just so I understand, uh, that one window that I've seen a picture out of would still be blocked even with the four-foot difference, would it not?
I believe you're right, yeah.
Would you like to hear from the project architect, he has his hands raised?
Yes, I think I saw two hands promptly go up after I asked the question, so yeah, I'd like to hear. From both.
Hey, you should be allowed to speak now. Oh, let me ask you, John, yeah.
I need.
Oh, thank you, we could hear you now.
Okay, hi, uh. Yes, my name is Dignit Delaney. And in designing the addition, you can see that the 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 windows are are. Are oriented to the major views which are the 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 north, I mean, the west and the south. And not to the side, I mean, you you can't plan views. When you have side six-foot setbacks in the side yard, it's such, it's uh. You got to accept that people can build. Do as high as you can. So that's why uh. Anybody with the expected to have major, have views of the side yards is this, it's unrealistic. So that's what I have to say.
Hey, thank you.
Um, the other person that has their hand raised is the neighbor, I don't know if you would like to hear from them again or not.
Is it just one person? Um, if you can keep his comments very brief, then yes.
We can.
I'll keep it super brief, yes, uh, the it, the current story polls still block our view from the window, again, encourage anybody to come. Um, it was also kind of eyeballing when they lowered the story full lines, um. Uh, so I'm unclear exactly where the right height is because there was no real measurement going on because my wife was home when they were doing it. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I see two further hands up, um, is there another comment? I think there's a new person commenting.
Uh, M. Delaney, I'll let you speak.
Hello, I'm Mary Delaney, I'm the south side neighbor, hello Brian, hello Wendy and Eric. Um. I think to the point here, I think it might be really helpful if someone could go up and just saw off the story poles um to the appropriate height, because I look at them too. Um, out the side of my house, which is the north side of my house, south side of the proposed structure, and um. I think it just might take some of the ambiguity out of the situation, um and that was my. Only suggestion at this point in time.
Thank you very much, um. And then I see the applicant has um hopefully a final comment.
Hey, Mr. Walsh, you should be able to speak.
Oh, okay, you you just in response, in case helpful, the. The story pulls went up and and they were too high, we then did the corrective measurements with with dignity and the architect, and I was also on the roof. Uh, to make them correct, that's when we brought them down, so there shouldn't be any confusion on if they're correct or not. That's all. And I.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Cut him off there, here, sorry, you can finish your statement, sorry.
Oh, sorry, ju- just saying, I agree with Mary, we should have cut the 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 wood poles. We should have.
Thank you, thank you very much for everyone's comments, um. I see the applicant's hand still up, but I assume he's, that was his comment. Thank you. So I don't see anything, anyone else? Do you, Elise? No.
I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
Great, thank you. So in that case, we'll bring it back to the commissioners for discussion and I think I'll start with Commissioner Campbell, please.
Thank you. So I I think that looking at the renderings and the and the plans shown here, it is going to be a large residence and it's going to have a pretty significant street presence. I do like the the new entryway, that's attractive design. And I also appreciate that the applicants have moved back the additions, the second story from the side yard. So we don't have a variance there, that's appreciated. I guess I I don't have a problem with the exception permit to modify the windows on the north wall. I think that's a relatively minor modification. I have some hesitations about the view from the neighbor and how long the structure is. I, you know, I I think that the the surrounding houses are taller, so you know, given that the side yard setbacks are consistent with the general plan. It seems seems reasonable, but you know, I understand the frustrations of of the neighbors who are being impacted. I'm curious to see my fellow commissioners' opinions and what they have to say before I give more comments.
Thank you, thank you very much. How about Commissioner Swisher?
I like this design. I think that, given what the house historically was, it was essentially two houses that were combined into one house. And I think that unfortunately, you know, limited what had to be done to make it a reasonable one-house design. And I think it's quite creative architecturally, how it did that. I think I agree with the staff report, it conforms. And I think that, you know, I really definitely appreciate that the Walshes have gone to the trouble of doing the shadow studies and also modifying the gables to the hip roof. I think personally, I think the gables would have been nicer, but I think that it's nice that they took into account some of these issues to modify it, to do the hip roof. So I could find for this report, for this project.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Wagstaff.
Yeah, I think I think the perspective, it's quite handsome that they show the front is more organized than the house. I sort of think of it as organized chaos with the various roof forms. But I also think that they've done, really tried pretty hard to have minimal impacts. You're going to have impacts when houses are that close together and they're on sloping the way they are. So I think they've done a pretty good job and I could find, I could approve from my perspective.
Excuse me, thank you very much, Commissioner Wagstaff. And for myself, I'm pretty much in agreement with with my commissioners here. I don't, I have a habit of going into a lot of detail about my comments, but I'll try. I know it's getting late, so I'll keep it short. I do like the design. I can make the findings for that and the exception permit. I do want to acknowledge the neighbors' comments, especially the northern neighbor. It is hard to see new designs go up next door and new construction. I was a little bit concerned about the views. I think it looks like it's still in line with the house beyond the other side. And I did see a number of windows there, so hopefully they do have other views. There is no, as I think Elise reminded us, there is no automatic right to a view or light under the code, unfortunately. But I think I could also make the findings. So I think we should have a, I'd like to request a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, if you could give me the number again.
Oh, twenty-two seventeen forty-nine Locust Avenue.
The twenty-two seven, what Natasha said, Locust Avenue. And agreeing with the staff report that we find for the project.
Can we have a second, please?
I will second it.
And Elise, can you do the roll call?
Chair Chalmers?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson is absent, so the motion passes. There is a ten-day appeal period. So if anyone from the public would like to appeal the application, they need to submit an appeal form and the appeal fee to the city clerk within ten days.
Thank you very much. I did say that we should check in at nine o'clock on timing. It's just coming up to nine PM now. I know we have two more applications left. I'm thinking, and if my fellow commissioners would like to step in, that we can, we should proceed with ninety-eight Magnolia. But I'm not sure if we're going to get around to getting to, getting around to hearing four-two-one Holcombe.
So I, let me make a comment, I agree with that, I think we should look at the next one. I think that there were significant issues with four-twenty-one Holcombe that need to be clarified. So I think that it is premature for us to be looking at that tonight. So I would propose that we continue four-twenty-one Holcombe to, you know, in the future, that we should look at the next one.
Yes, we should definitely do that one, but I do want to just get Elise's thoughts on that one, or should we just defer that to? I don't want to leave the applicant hanging.
Yeah, I think it's or the neighbors that are here, I do think it's somewhat unlikely for you to get to it with the next application just starting now. So you may want to at least indicate if you're going to continue it at this point so that the neighbor and the applicant don't just get continued after they wait for another hours or longer for the, to get through the next item.
Is there any guidance or anything that we should be providing to make it more helpful for them?
Well, I would love to hear that, but I don't know if you want to take that out of order and without public comment.
Oh, I see.
So if.
We can't really do that then.
Yeah, I mean, if you could get through the next item and wanted to open it up for public comment and give them comments, that would be great. I'm sure for the applicant, but I'm not sure that you'll have time to do that. Or that's, that's up to you if you want to.
Okay, so unless Brock or Liam have any any different thoughts, I'm thinking that we may not get around to hearing this one and we could request that the applicant agree to a continuance. But we could, I don't know if we should say that now or say that in thirty minutes.
I mean, I guess we could see how ninety-three Magnolia went, but I think that's a little more complicated, perhaps, project that may take a little longer anyway, so.
Okay, and then if we do continue it, Elise, maybe we could ask that four-two-one Holcombe could be number one, like first to be heard in any future hearing. And if we could get it on the very next meeting agenda.
We could do that. So do you want to just continue, but or would you like to try to make a motion to continue that one?
Do we need any input from the applicant or can we just, do we just do that?
We can see if he'll agree to a continuance. I mean, the alternative is you're just not going to get to it, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Well, you know what, then let's just keep moving forward with nineteen ninety-three Magnolia Avenue. I think the applicant for four-two-one can make their own decision if they want to stay and listen in or if they want to drop off.
Okay, so just so everyone in the audience knows, nothing's been continued at this point. So if you're here for four-two-one Holcombe, it hasn't been continued yet, but there may be a possibility that it might be continued tonight.
Okay, I think likely, so, okay. So opening now with ninety-three Magnolia Avenue, project twenty-two eleven, if we could please have the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chair Chalmers. Okay, so I'm presenting ninety-three Magnolia. This is application twenty-two eleven for design review and heritage tree removal. The subject property is located at ninety-three Magnolia in the South Magnolia neighborhood. This is a non-conforming five thousand two hundred and fifty square foot rectilinear lot that's currently developed with a one thousand two hundred and fifty-eight square foot non-conforming single-story family, single-story, single-family residence that was built in nineteen thirteen. The applicants are requesting approval of planning commission, design review and heritage tree removal to allow for the substantial demolition and remodel of the existing residence. The finished new residence will be two thousand one hundred and one square feet and will include a one-car garage and a partially covered front porch. The proposal does conform to all R one zoning regulations and would not require any variances, but does necessitate the removal of one heritage size Coast Redwood. So I want to start with a little bit of background on the home at ninety-three Magnolia. This is a address of note and the Larchford Past and Present, which is our publication regarding historic resources and potential historic resources in our city. I've indicated it here, this is an excerpt from the book, this is the subject site. This is the historic evaluation that was done on this property. It was rated C, so it is not considered a historic resource, but it is considered a contributor to a historic neighborhood and contributes to the character of Larchford. This is a photograph of the front of the existing house as it stands today with the story polls erected. This is an excerpt from Larchford Past and Present, I won't read about it out to you in detail, but this home, which has not been, as far as any records that we have at the city, there's been no improvement, significant improvement to the home since nineteen thirteen when it was built by a Sanquin convict. And this is a photograph of the westerly side of the existing house, looking from the rear. As I stated before, the existing home does conform to all of, the proposal conforms to all of the R one regulations. The existing home does have several non-conformities, including encroachment into the required rear yard setback on a substandard lot size and insufficient available parking. As proposed, the new home would be more conforming than the current structure. So this slide shows the existing and proposed floor plans. Here's the existing on the left, the single-story. The proposal would have a second story, which would have additional bedrooms and bathrooms and closets. So for the sake of reviewing, the applicant has indicated that this is a remodel of an existing home. Staff leads, for all intents and purposes, the design review should be looked at through the lens of a new home. They are indicating the complete demolition of this backside of the property, of the structure here and partial demolition of the front. So they intend to keep this load portion of the load-bearing wall, this portion of the load-bearing wall, this portion of the load-bearing wall, this portion of the foundation and flooring, and take out the rest of the walls and commence with their construction. As you can see, looking at the elevation, there is significant. This is why I consider this a new home. They are not retaining any of the exterior facade and it's going to be quite different. The ground story will have a total floor area of one thousand two hundred and thirty-four square feet and will include a two hundred and eighty-one square foot single-car garage, kitchen, dining room, living room, half-bath, laundry room and mudroom. And the design includes a new two hundred and sixty-six square foot partially covered entry porch and a replacement of an existing concrete path and landing. While the floor area of the proposed ground story is smaller than the existing single-story home, the design widens the footprint of the house, bringing the foundation several feet closer to a standard-protected heritage Coast Redwoods. Overall, the design reduces the number of window openings of the ground floor in the second-story addition. The second-story addition. I'm sorry, I've lost my place. Has one window opening on the westerly side. Right here. Two on the front northerly side and three on the back southerly side with no new proposed window openings on the easterly side of the home. The residence will be finished in a neutral-colored stucco with brown soffit and painted trimless fiberglass doors and windows. The contemporary design features a flatshed-style roof with minimal exterior details aside from the entry porch, which is to be finished with bluestone tiles. Other proposed improvements include installing a new concrete driveway and the construction of a new retaining wall in the westerly side yard. For the code, retaining walls are not considered to be structures, therefore the proposed retaining wall would not require a setback variance. The proposal will be in line with the R one allowable FAR, increasing the floor area ratio from one thousand two hundred and fifty-eight square feet with a FAR of twenty-four percent to its proposed two thousand one hundred and one square feet with an FAR of forty percent. Additionally, I'm going out of order a little bit. The applicant is proposing the removal of one heritage tree indicated here at the star. I've also included an excerpt from their arborist report and tree protection plan. We had their arborist report reviewed by a consulting arborist for the city who indicated that he did have some concerns regarding the tree protection plan. There's this stand of redwoods here, which is indicated in the drawing here of this cluster. So the applicants are proposing to remove this heritage-sized tree. And they have a protection plan for all of the other Coast Redwoods that are in this stand. Our arborist did indicate some concerns that the proposed project could damage the root structure of tree nine, ten and twelve, which is not pictured, but you could kind of imagine it was where I was standing when I took this photo. As such, I've not been able to make findings for heritage tree removal because I think the way that it's proposed is just as removing one tree. But essentially, we could be looking at the removal of four trees down the line and the heritage tree removal that's been proposed is only for one and only looks at the impacts of removing one tree as far as how that would affect the flow of water and erosion, et cetera. And considering the applicable codes and findings for approval, I've identified the following concerns for consideration. As proposed, I found that the design of the project is not in conformance with the criteria of approval for applications. Staff finds that the proposed architecture and design is not compatible with the character of the prevailing neighborhood. Additionally, the design does not minimize the perception of excessive bulk. I think you really get a good idea, looking at the side elevations, there's a really especially on the westerly side elevation, quite a flat plane, which is not coherent with the city's single-family design. especially on the westerly side elevation, quite a, a flat plane, which is, uh, not coherent with the city's single-family design guidelines. Additionally, I have identified some concerns, uh, regarding the neighborhood character. These are photos of, uh, homes in the immediate vicinity. This here is, uh, the home to the south, or I'm sorry, to the east of the, of the subject site. Um, this is the home to the west of the subject site. Um, these homes are not immediately across, they're kind of catty-cornered. Uh, these are around the corner. The there's one around the corner that's got a little bit more of a contemporary look with a stucco, uh, but these, this is not facing, uh, South Magnolia. Largely the concerns that I've identified in my staff report are in relation to how the general plan talks about, um, heritage. It's not accurate to call it a heritage resource. It's not a heritage resource, um, or historic resource. But it is rated C and the general plan and the heritage, uh, preservation board has stated that it's rated C. Um, structures should be encouraged to be preserved. Uh, the existing home lost points on its evaluation due to the loss of architectural integrity, um, meaning that, you know, this home hasn't been maintained over time. I think looking at the existing photos, that's kind of clear that there's some areas that are in disrepair. Um, however, my, in my findings, I, uh, don't see that the proposal is, um, kind of trying to keep any of the original design elements that would preserve some of that character, um, as it contributes to the city, especially considering this is facing Magnolia and is on a, on the southerly entry into the city. Um, as far as the tree goes, it's not able to make findings, uh, largely due to concerns about how removal of this tree and, um, potential impacts from the proposed construction could necessitate the removal of not just one tree, but perhaps four, four trees down the line. Uh, my con- conclusion is that all required findings cannot be made. Uh, my recommendation is that the commission hears from the applicant, considers the design concerns that are identified in the staff report. And discuss with the applicant, uh, those concerns. I would recommend that the commission ask the applicant to agree to a PFA extension and, uh, continue the item to a date uncertain. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much, Jackie, for that detailed staff report. Um, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff? No one?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chair, Chair Chalmers. I did want to point out something that wasn't in my slideshow. Um, the current home is, does not have, uh, adequate parking. The proposed home, uh, would have adequate parking. Uh, they are proposing, um, one covered. I don't know if it's in any of these. They're proposing one covered space in their single-car garage, two, um, spaces in their repaved driveway and one guest space, um, in front of the house on, on the street, as was allowed by code.
Thank you. Thank you for that. No, thank you. Appreciate that addition and thank you for the clarity on the parking. Uh, we appreciate that. Um, sounds like there were no questions for, on the commission. So could we see if the applicant or their architect would like to, um, address the commission? I see Will Jones.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that the architect?
Yes, I'm the architect.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, um, Jackie did a pretty good job of describing the extent of the project. Um, so what I would like to do is, uh, address the concerns that she found in her find- and in her findings. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna guess that silence is move ahead. So, um, all right, so I'm gonna basically read, um, from what I wrote, um, earlier today, because I just want to be really concise. Um, so one of her concerns were the, um, parts of the code, the crit- the criteria, um, for, uh, compliance. Um, so item two, preservation of natural landscape. Impacts to environmental features are minimized to the greatest extent possible. And in that, they talk about prominent trees, grading and open areas. So trees is really the issue. In order to bring the project into compliance with district standards and given the minimal building air, billable area, we feel it's necessary to remove one of thirteen prominent redwoods on the property. We would prefer to number ten or eleven in order to better preserve the health of the remaining trees, but respect the desire to keep as many as possible. Our arborist can speak for himself, but his length and breadth of experience tells us that the proposed building will have no detrimental effect on the rest of the stand. The new house will sit lightly on a site, build on grade beams that will, for the most part, penetrate the ground by only sixty-eight inches. And those will be supported by a series of twelve to fourteen-inch diameter piers that are placed carefully to minimize harm to the redwoods. Uh, grading, we have been careful to keep the grade changes minimized. Aside from the new driveway swell, garage floor and infill of the area behind the house or the old house will move. There will be no grade changes. Um, is there any way I can, uh, share my screen? Cause I've got, uh, some, uh, uh, slides that I'd like to show you.
Yes, you should be able to share a screen.
Okay.
I think he's just an attendee right now. Um, let me put him to balance.
I'm mute.
Okay, go ahead. You should be able to share now.
Share screen. Okay. All right. So, um, yeah, grading, basically where the old house is, we're basically going to fill it in so that it follows the natural grade, um, that was there before the house. Um, otherwise, just the driveway swell here and then a pad for parking underneath the house. Otherwise, we're leaving the topography exactly the same. Uh, open areas, uh, open areas will be preserved. It should be noted that this project will reduce the foot, building footprint on the property from seventeen forty-four square feet to fifteen hundred square feet. You can see the outline of the existing house and we're basically reducing it to this, um, simple square or rectangle. All right. So there was also an issue with, I'm five materials and colors for single-family construction. Uh, and it is said, uh, shall be appropriate to the house style and character and compatible with the site and character of the neighborhood. So house style and character. The house is a nod to um, mid-century Bauhaus, a style that has been around for almost a hundred years. The materials that we're going to use are appropriate for this style. In fact, stucco is the predominant material for houses of the style. White is also the predominant color for the style, but taking note that Larkfield's criteria for approval for multiple unit residents prefer earth tones and our desire to have the house better blend in with the site's landscape, the house colors are muted. Uh, compatible with the site. As noted above, the colors were chosen to fit in with the site. However, we are open to darkening the palette if the color is, um, still too bright. Character of the neighborhood. This is the, this is the big thing that, um, we need to address. Although many of the houses in the surrounding neighbor, uh, surrounding area tend to be of a variety of craftsman styles built in the thirties and forties. There are plenty of exceptions. The neighbor to the left is, has a nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties ranch-style home. Um, the neighbor to the immediate right ha- is, was, if not refurbished, rebuilt sometime in the late nineteen nineties or early two thousands. And, uh, looks to have the shape and materials that would be often seen at Lake Tahoe. The house beyond it is a Kate Con style. So between this little row, we see basically eclectic style, different architectural styles. Okay, all right, what's next? All right, let's see, uh, further, the house to the right. Oh, well, there goes my. Oh, I guess I accidentally turned it off. Anyway, I've got another photo, um, that shows the property. Oh, there it is. I'm sorry. This is the house past the, uh, ranch-style house. Uh, it is completely obscured by, uh, shrubbery and trees and really can't be, you can't really tell what's going on from the street. Similarly, ninety-three Magnolia, um, the trees and foliage block the property. The only way that you can see it is a passing by the driveway. You'll see a portion of the building right here. Okay, say further. If the commission feels that the project has no, as we've designed it, has no historic precedent and is out of context with the neighborhood, there is a precedent of modern houses in our neighborhood. Um, two blocks away. At one oh six Baltimore, uh, we have a definitively modern house, um, almost similar in style to the house, also done even in stucco. Um, and ups. Um, at thirty-one Piedmont, just around the corner, we have a very large three-story structure, um, that is close to the street and, uh, has a flat top as well, very modern. And then finally, uh, around the corner from this, we have another modern structure. Um, so our argument is that, uh, this area, this neighborhood is very eclectic. Um, this Baltimore sits on a street that is mostly bungalows. Uh, this sits on a street that's mostly branch style. And this has basically, it's in, it's in and among both, uh, ranch and bungalow-style houses. Okay, all right. Then the third thing, number C is bulk. Uh, it's important that the findings acknowledge that the designs break up the building's bulk and steps back its masses. Uh, contrary to the findings, the west side is not one flat plain. Oops. This is that plate, this is that plane. We have, um, the second story and the first story are offset by one foot, uh, to, again, to break up the mass so that it's not just one solid wall. Um, it is true that the offset may in fact make the upper story, at least on this, uh, elevation loom a little larger than it would if it were set back. Uh, however, this west elevation is not seen by the street at all. It's impossible, it's impossible to see it unless you're on the property at, at a acute angle. Uh, the neighbors also cannot see it because this whole, uh, area is obscured by trees, although I did put them on the trees, but this whole area is full of foliage and trees. So even if this were considered bulky, uh, or, um, yeah, if it were in, in considered bulky, uh, it will have zero impact on the neighborhood. Um, further, there is precedent around the corner at, uh, well, thirty-one Piedmont, as I showed you earlier. This dominates the street. It's close to the front of the house. Again, it's three stories tall. Uh, and even though it does break up the masses, it still has much more of a presence on the street than, uh, our project ever could. Also mentioned is the flat roof. Um, please refer to the other examples of the modern homes that are in the neighborhood, um, that we discussed earlier.
Uh, Just a reminder of the ten-minute, um, limit on presentation.
Okay, well, we're almost done. Um, then finally, the overall design. The findings indicate that the project is not compatible with the historic architectural and aesthetic character of the neighborhood. I refer you back to a response in a criteria portion of the findings, uh, for all three of these. Further, one of the first questions I had in preparation for the design is this property within the historic district. For if it was, I would have designed the project to fit within Larch Fur's historic guidelines, but it isn't. It sits outside the historic district in a portion of the neighborhood with eclectic architectural styles that span one hundred years. The findings indicate that Larkspur, or at least the Heritage Pres- Preservation Board, encouraged the preservation of even classy structures. But when you review the resource evaluation report and page twelve of the findings, you'll see that the billing scores are low in all categories, scoring forty out of two hundred and twenty points. Uh, in our opinion, there is no valid reason to preserve anything about this building or its history. And there we go. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, for that presentation. Um, do we have any questions for the architect?
Um, I had one quick question. Um, I'm just wondering why it's referred to as remodel. I don't think it needs to be referred to as a remodel and it's really doesn't, doesn't feel that it's being remodeled. Um, and you're doing pure and grade-beam foundations. Uh, so what exactly are you saving?
Well, uh, we're trying to save as much of the floor as we can and, uh, bits and bobs of the one, uh, bearing wall that's right here. Um, we're doing it basically, um, for the simplicity of the application. Uh, if this commission decides that, no, this is a, you know, a demo and rebuild, um, then we're not going to fight that. But for, for our application, to keep it simple, we just made this a major remodel.
But you are on that back wall, which I can't point an arrow at. Uh, are you doing, uh, pure and gray beam foundations underneath that existing wall? I mean, you're gonna have to take it down, right?
Yes, you, you know, you're absolutely right. We will have to take that down. So, uh, yeah, in effect, uh, this is a rebuild.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Um, thank you. Any more questions for the, um, architect? No, um, and then do we have anyone else? Do we have the applicant, um, that would like to make any comments or anybody in the audience?
Um, I see someone in the audience. I believe this is their arborist. He would like to speak, um, and June. I'm going to allow.
Unmuting. Uh, good evening, everybody. This is Kent Julin, the arborist. Hopefully you can hear me.
We can.
Good. So I evaluated all the trees on the property and I am completely confident that trees ten and twelve will be able to be saved and protected during construction of the home. Um, they followed my suggestion to create a pure and grade beam, uh, foundation support for the home. And in, in that way, I mean, the impacts to the redwoods, which are relatively tolerant to root disturbance, uh, they will, they will continue to grow and, uh, trees ten and twelve will probably be here after we're all gone. So, um, I think with, um, care with, you know, putting up the tree protection fencing and, um, monitoring, uh, the, um, excavation of the, of the piers. Uh, I usually am present when the upper couple feet of the piers are, uh, excavated by the contractor. And if a large root is encountered to And if a large root is encountered, then we can move it to accommodate. You know, missing that root. So I, I'm. Nearly certain that these trees will all. Be protected and capable of withstanding the relatively minor root disturbance. With the exception of tree eleven, of course, which would need to be removed. And I'm, I will sit here and, and if you have questions, then we can, then I will be happy to answer them as they come up.
Thank you very much. If anyone has any questions, let me know, otherwise I see another hand up.
I've got a quick question for Kent.
Go ahead.
It looks like tree ten is. Less than a foot away from the new. Grade beam, is that accurate? I mean, based on my. I got out the scale here, but. Is that accurate? I, I mean, I'm not an arborist, I'm not claiming to, to, you know, know more about these redwoods. That just seems awful close to, to a grade beam, to any excavation, you know, to. You, you know, I just, you have any comment?
Can you hear me? I can tell you that it's three feet away from the great. Number ten.
Okay, thanks.
And what, just to respond to your comment, this is Kent. It's very minor excavation and, you know, most of the roots are deeper than. What is planned for the placement of the grave beam, so I. I think it's important to provide. To accommodate the growth of the trunk of the tree into the future and it's, it's. Probably got another hundred years before it might meet. The home. Or, or longer. Through growth.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions? For the arborist? Okay, I think we have one comment from the audience. Again, I'd like to remind that it's just a three-minute limit to comments.
James Holmes Larkspur, it's very unfortunate to see. A notable historic cottage being replaced with an extremely boxy stocko structure, which is out of sync with the. Immediate neighborhood, this is a classic example of a rustic craftsman structure. The evaluate, the historic evaluation has a flat out error. In that it subtracted ten points for what is called desecration. And it would have been fifty points, but it subtracted ten points for desecration and ten points for condition, condition is upkeep. Desecration is subsequent changes, but as the. As, as the staff mentioned and also as Larkspur heritage, Larkspur past and present. Write-up mentions and the staff report also mentioned. The, there have been no changes in this structure, therefore, there should not have been a. Decrease of ten points, which would have given it a fifty. Furthermore, the evaluation, which incidentally and oddly is not dated and, and signed. But in any event, it also fails to take account of the owner builder, who not only was the. Give additional points, who not only, it was done by uniquely by convicts. But the original owner was the head, again, according to the Larkspur past and present, the head of. The State Bureau of Investigation, he was a pioneer in the use of fingerprints. He owned and managed the bloodhounds who tracked down escaped prisoners. And also, he was hired by the city to investigate a scandal relating to the mutilation of the city records. So he was a significant local person and so there really, this should have been a solid sixty. A solid sixty points. And so I think there were, there, there was a flat out, there's flat out errors there. The structure is, is noteworthy, it has a, it has a wraparound veranda. It has, according to Larkspur past and present, it has. The fireplace in the house is low-grade white quartz with white gold, with gold banding. That came from the Empire Mine in Grass Valley, so this is a notable structure with a notable history. And it, it's unfortunate to see that, it's doubly unfortunate. To see that there, that it's a square, boxy, flat roof structure. There really are not any other houses in the immediate vicinity, visual vicinity that. And it is completely at variance with, including the other contemporary homes, which are somewhat woodsy in nature. It will literally stand out like a sore thumb. And the redwoods will not, in fact, conceal it significantly, especially if they are trimmed up as they typically are. And there are other currently shielding foliage, which are proposed to be removed because they're not heritage. So there, so in, in summary, the heritage, the, the evaluation is obviously an error. And should be revisited and the design itself should be revisited, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holmes, we always appreciate your comments, so thank you. Anyone else would like to make a comment?
Chair Chalmers, can I make one comment and a clarifying comment regarding public? Comment we just received.
Sure, sorry, who's talking?
This is Jackie, the associate.
Oh, Jackie, I lost you there, okay.
There's something that the public commenter pointed out was that if those. Points were given and this did in fact receive a score of fifty or sixty, this would have been rated B. Which would have made it eligible for potential inclusion on the historic inventory. That's all.
Okay, I understand, so you're saying that if this had got a higher score of fifty or sixty as described, then this would have had more constraints. Because we would have to go through the heritage board. And comply with the heritage requirements.
Is that? I, I believe if it was, it would have been eligible for potential inclusion, the ordinance is not adopted for those. That would, that last twenty nineteen evaluation. But we do have the list of things that are eligible for potential inclusion, so I do believe if it had been rated B, we would be going to the heritage board. For, for review. However, it's not, it's not rated B, it's rated C, but we're only ten points away from, from that next level.
Understood, okay. Does anyone have any questions on that? For Jackie? Okay. I don't see any more. Questions, I mean, any more hands raised in the attendee list? So I think we can bring it back to the commission for deliberation. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Wagstaff if he would like to share his comments.
Actually, I was hoping somebody else would go first, but.
I can, I can pick on Commissioner Campbell.
Well. I actually like the architecture and I don't think history stops at any particular point in time. It, it's a cute little bungalow. I think if it were cleaned up. You know, and somebody wanted to keep it that way, that would be fine too. I think they should, honestly, there's a lot of redwoods in there and if it were up to me, I'd remove the other. Ten, eleven and twelve, because I do think in the future that. That the, the other two are gonna be a problem. But it's not rated as a sixty or a fifty and we're working off of that basis and. I think it's, it's a different kind of architecture, but it's well done. So I think I could support the application.
Thank you. Commissioner Swisher, let's hear your comments, please.
I'm gonna take a one hundred and eighty-degree diametrically opposed view, Brock here, I think this is a travesty, I think it's ugly. I think it's completely not in character with the entry into Larkspur, I think it's. I mean, honestly, and I don't mean to criticize the architect, but I could have done this design in eighth grade. And I've been accused of being too nice, but I'm gonna be pretty. Outspoken here, I think this has no place in Larkspur where it is. I think that just because there are other ugly houses, doesn't make this ugly house something that we should support. And I'm completely opposed to this design and the location where it's at. I think this should have been a historical house and I think that. A very nice little craftsman bungalow could be built here, even if it's a rebuild, so that's, that's my vote, I cannot support this.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Swisher. Commissioner Campbell.
I. Yeah. I don't think that this house. You know, I, I. Driving, driving by, see a lot of. Craftsman-style houses on, on Magnolia. The, the impression that I get from the neighborhood is, is not one of. You know, the, 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 the modern type of house that like the applicant is proposing here. I think I would. Personally, I would prefer to see a craftsman-style house or, you know, something that fits a little bit better. You know, without the flat roof and the blockiness. I, I do think that it, that it might stick out a little bit. I think the redwoods in the front help with that. And, and I do agree with Brock that, you know, time, time marches on, we're, we're working with what we're working with here in terms of the historic. Survey. So, you know, I, it's, I guess it's not the type of house that I would choose. For myself, but I think that I can make findings and. Support of it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Campbell. Actually, this is quite a tricky one. I. Personally don't love the design of the house, I don't necessarily think it's a perfect fit for the neighborhood, I think we could have a much. I, I do like some of the craftsman-style houses on the street that would fit in a lot better and that would be my personal preference. However, just because I personally like something, doesn't necessarily make it. Right? So that would be kind of my first comment on the design of the house on. I do appreciate that they're going to the effort to actually do something on this site, I think right now it's just a mess. And it's good that somebody's coming in and is willing to take on this project, so. I hope we can encourage the, this, this project to sort of continue. I think on the redwoods and the tree removal. I agree, I tend to agree with Brock there, that it would. To make this, to make any project work, I think you, you need some space and. If they need to take more than one tree down, they should apply to put, take more than one tree down, I think. If they can preserve the trees, that's fantastic, but. There's no to, to put, put a property there and if they need to take down more trees, it'd be better to know about it now. Than to come back later on or let the trees die and have more problems later on, so that would be my, my thought on the redwood trees. So yeah, so that's my comments. I think we might be slightly split as a commission here tonight. And my question for at least is what happens if it's two by two?
A tie vote, if a tie vote doesn't, doesn't pass. So maybe it's worth having a little more discussion to see if. There's some agreement.
I'm, I'm wondering if we couldn't. Ask if the architect could, could take it back and look at softening. Some of the more hard forms of it. I, I, I don't think it's far off, honestly, in a modern style and I. And I think we're gonna, the reality is in, in Larkspur, we're gonna see more modern styles and because there's craftsmen in an area, doesn't mean. You should be, unless, you know, you have a CCNRs that say only craftsmen houses in this area. I think it's a little harsh to say that you can't have an expression of your own. Kind of, of house. So, but. Perhaps we could. See if there's a way to. Soften the forms a little bit. Or, you know, if it, we're gonna perhaps have a two-to-two vote, I don't know.
I actually agree with, with Commissioner Brock here, I, I, I think. You know, it, it wouldn't be my favorite, but it's not a horrible design and if they can. I, I don't know the correct terminology, the architectural terminology, we can do more cut-ins or. Add some, so it's not so blocky. And, and I think the architect had made a suggestion about darkening the color. I think that would actually work too, rather than the, the color they've picked right now, just so it blends in more. I don't know if Commissioner Swisher or Campbell have any thoughts?
I do, I do, I, I mean, I think that it's a combination of location, where this house is, is an entrance to Larkspur. And I do, I completely understand the architect, you know, looking at some of the other houses to the left and right of it as not being, you know, hundred percent. In line with historical, but I do think this is a historical property and I agree with the staff. That I think the evaluation of it was not properly done to reflect its historical significance. I think this house is a part of Larkspur history and I think that. That should have been taken into account as opposed to a total teardown. The other thing is, I, I look back tonight and I look at that first house that we saw and we saw and we turned it down because it was. Blocky and it had a, had a Balkan mask, well, this place is entirely Balkan mask and I, and, and I don't get me wrong, I like Bauhaus. I like that design, I just don't think that design is right for this location. And I apologize if I seem harsh and, and I, you know, to the architect, but, but I just think this is not the right house for the location and. I would see, I'd prefer to see something else there that would be more in characteristic in keeping with the neighborhood. Even though there are some houses there like on Baltimore and other places that, that do that, I would never approve those houses either, to be honest. So that's, that's my comment.
Commissioner Campbell, do you have anything to add or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would be. I, I think I'm echoing Commissioner Wagstaff and, and Commissioner Chalmers. And that, it's not, again, it's not my preference, but. Yeah, I mean, I would be happy to see some of the, the harsher edges be, be softened and, you know, make it. I guess for a lack of a better term, stick out less. Maybe darkening the paint color would help with that, but I mean, paint isn't, isn't permanent and the building form, I think is. Is a more permanent feature of the building, so. I mean, if, if, if we can, as a commission, find. That we should, you know. Have the applicant reconsider some of the, the harsh edges that. Maybe we can come to that. Conclusion.
Yeah, maybe. I'm just gonna defer to Brock here, but if there's a way we could, so it sounds like we may. Sounds like we, we all agree there should be some form of redesign. Maybe to the extent we're not all on the same page, but. It would be good to give us the guidance, some guidance to the architect as to how to move forward with that, whether it's. I, I wanted, sorry, Brock, I know I interrupted you, but I do feel like it would be nice to have some kind of honoring of the original. House that was on the site, I mean, it's. It was still, you know, had, had a factor of forty, right, so there was some, some relevance of that. And it looks like that's completely gone in this new design.
Perhaps. You know, a modern expression of. If, if you had a porch, for instance, with some, even if they're, they're very rectilinear. Modern columns. Just to break up the mass a little bit. And I think also the possibility of having some. Vertical elements of, of wood. I think there's ways to make it happen, I, you know, I don't want, again, I'm not trying to design somebody else's. I, I think there's ways to make it happen. I, you know, I don't want, again, I'm not trying to design somebody else's house, and I don't think it's so, uh, it's different, but um I'm, I'm okay with it being different. I think neighborhoods change, and um I, I don't know, you know, I don't know what else to say, really.
Yeah, this is a tricky one, so. So I think, in that, the question I had actually for staff was, given that the architect acknowledged that this is a teardown rather than a remodel, are there things that need to change in any event in their application?
Because it complied with the setbacks, uh, it doesn't trigger any, anything new for the application. However, um, because one of the callers noted the historic status, and several of you have also commented on that historic status, I would be, um, I would feel uncomfortable approving a CEQA exemption without additional research into the, the structure. So as the caller pointed out, there's no date on the report, we don't know who prepared it. Um, that I, that I would feel more comfortable making an exception, or making a finding that the structure is not historic if we had an actual um, evaluation of the house. So that, that would be the one concern I have, is that to make a finding that the project is exempt from CEQA. Um, there's an ex- an exception to the exemptions that, that the exceptions do not apply if it's a historic structure. And if this was to be rise to the level of a local historic structure, um, you would be looking at the house differently, so. If it doesn't, then your comments about revising it are fine, and it would proceed along um, as a CEQA exemption, but I, I, I think there maybe, um, we may need to ask for some professional evaluation of the house just to verify that it isn't in fact a, a historic structure. To have that in our, in our record if you're approving its demolition.
So can we, can we do that? And have that done in the next, you know, fair amount of time?
Yeah, I think, I think they, either um, the, the city could do it at their expense, we could talk to them, or they could have a, a a consultant prepare a report um that we review. Um, but those, I, I think it could be done fairly quickly, when I would imagine, other than that it's the holidays right now.
So while they do that, can we make a request for some consideration on the design?
I, yeah, I think that you've provided a lot of comments on that, and um, I see the owner's hand is raised, so maybe we could find out if she has more questions about that, but um, I, I feel like you have given a lot of direction on the changes that you'd want to see.
Okay, so, so we'll hear from the owner, and then we'll decide how we formulate a, a, a motion to request, I guess, a design, so it will, it'll be like a, it'd be like a continuance, right? Okay, all right, so let's hear from the um, from the property owner.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, hi, yes, uh, before purchasing this house, I reached out to the Larkspur planning, especially to find out if it's historically designated or not. If I would have known that it's historical and I could not build the modern house, which was my dream, I wouldn't bought it. So I went to this huge expense to buy this house and um, hired the architect and wait for the design review and do all the, all those like ra- routes of changes. And now, when I'm on my final design review, I'm hearing that you're gonna change the designation on me and uh, consider the house historical. I don't think it's fair to me. That should have been done way, way before, before I purchased it. And, and why is it you're changing it now? And there is like no white quartz right now in the house. It's falling apart, and the previous owner was ninety-seven years old. There is no running water, there's no working sewer. And she had eighteen cats living with her. And bless her heart, some of those cats were disabled and they could not use the litter box. So the smell there is just like terrible, and it's like, everything is like ro- rotten in this house. Last time I was there, my, my legs were itching up to my knees for months. It's like very unsafe, it's very unhealthy, and it's like absolutely nothing to save. You probably haven't been inside, and I encourage you not, not to go, because the, the, even the air there, very unsafe to breathe. When I purchased it, there were like bags of used diapers there, because there was no toilet, so she was using diapers for years, and she was ninety-seven years old when I purchased it. So it just like really disaster. It's, it's really disastrous, so I, I thought I'm doing the city a favor that I'm gonna build beautiful, modern house, house of my dream. And now I'm hearing the no, I'm back to square one, and now it's gonna be considered historical, so it means I cannot do what I want. It's really upset me, I'm sorry.
Thank, thank you, thank you. I mean, that's a fair point. Um, Elise, can we, I mean, are you, you're not, are you, can you just clarify what you're suggesting, yeah?
So it's, I guess my concern is that we don't have a basis, a very good basis to say it's not locally historic with that one sheet of paper evaluation that we don't know who prepared it. Um, it could have been a not professional that did it, unless there's more in our records about that. Um, the, the conclusion of the report could still say that it's not historic, so um just in my opinion, I, I think it given that people have concerns about its historic character, I don't think we have adequate review of whether or not it's historic or not. And like I say, the report could find, agree that based on the condition of the house, it doesn't rise to that level.
So what, what do you think? Uh, I mean, what, what would be the next steps?
Yeah.
I mean, if you would like a historic report or more of an evaluation of this house, that I think that would be the first step, so that they could see if a professional agrees that it doesn't rise to a level that would be locally protected. Um, and then they can move on with revising their design, and that, that would be, I think, a logical way to proceed. Um, alternatively, based on that sheet that you have, you could, you can just continue with the, the um conclusion that it, it's not historic based on that piece of paper evaluation. And then just request them to get an evaluate, or make modifications to the design.
It feels to me unfair to, if this person went through uh, the process based on what Larkspur had done, somebody did. Um, it seems unfair to me to uh, throw them back into that process where they may not be able to do anything with the house.
I agree.
I think that, that that horse has left the barn, um, in my opinion, anyway.
I think in the future, if we see something like this, we should maybe check it at the beginning of the application rather than now.
Ideally, I think that we should have checked it at the beginning of the application, and, and more so not because of the historic listing, but under CEQA, we need to we need to review structures to determine if they're historic, but um.
So let's, can we, can we like not go down that path and just focus on?
You can make, you can make the finding that it's not historic based on the document that you have. There's, someone could challenge that conclusion, but you could, that could be your basis for the CEQA exemption.
Okay, um, there's one more comment. Do we have, do we, it's ten o'clock now, and we were supposed to stop half an hour ago. Um, how do we? Do we, I don't know who the comment, who the person is. Can we listen? Can we make it like one more comment?
It's Mr. Holmes, I believe.
Just, just to, uh, I think there's still some people on the call, sorry to, I think some, for, for twenty-one Holcombe. I, I think we can safely say that we're gonna continue that later. Maybe we should, you know, let people know that we're not gonna get to that.
Oh, the other project?
Yeah, uh, I'm just thinking of the other people there that have been waiting on call for you.
Yeah, no, definitely, we're not gonna get to that project tonight. I agree, um, we will continue that. Um, Mr. Holmes, I think we've already heard from you, so um, I don't think we're gonna make any decisions tonight, other than continue. I think someone's gonna maybe make a motion to continue to um um, this, that is, for design, like, um, to reconsider the design. I don't know, Elise, what?
What, what I would recommend is, so because of, this application has actually been a long time. Um, it would be good to get the owner's consent to an extension, if you'd like to continue it. Um, knowing that the alternative is you'd be voting on its design tonight. Um, so I would recommend asking if they would can, agree to a continuance, and if they maybe find out if they have enough direction to, to modify the design.
So who are we asking? The owner or the applicant, or the um, the?
The pro- the applicant, the property owner. I, I would confirm with her that it's okay, if she would agree to a continuance to modify the design.
Okay, I think she has a handout.
She should be able to speak, I think she's not.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Yeah, so, so the question is if, if we should continue the same application, or should we uh, redesign the house and then continue? So your finding is for me?
Um, no, just whether or not you would agree to a time, um, a continuance of time for the, to redesign to modify the project as they've recommended tonight.
Yes, I would agree. Yes, yes, I would agree. I would, I would agree to redesign, um, then, um, my, my other question is, would the heritage tree removal, is it approved? Or how do I go about that?
Uh, it didn't sound like anyone on the commission had a concern with the heritage tree removal that's proposed.
I, I would, I would only say that if uh, you, you know, I, I would not have a problem with removing the other two redwoods. Personally, I don't know about the other uh commissioners, but uh, I think there's an awful lot of redwoods there, and then you seem really close to the house to me.
Yes, I would remove, yes, I absolutely agree. I would remove one, one more tree.
So maybe when you submit, you can ask for the applicant, you can ask to have that second tree removed as well. Um, and then everything else to be preserved.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the approval of the owner. Um, so do we go ahead and um, make the request for the um, emotion, or do I take it back to the attendees? To listen to the, and what is the requirement?
Uh, I would, you don't have to listen to Mr. Holmes again, because you've given him an opportunity to talk, unless you'd like to hear what he has to say a second time. Or hear a second comment from him, um, but you don't, you don't have to take public comment again.
I'm gonna defer to my commissioners, because I know some of them have to be up very early in the morning.
I, I think, I, I think I would, I would entertain making a motion to um, continue the item uh, to give the owner and their architect an opportunity to uh, soften the modern facade, as it were. And then if uh, Miss, James Holmes has something to say, it will be coming back to us, so.
Can we have a second?
I second that motion.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Uh, Chair Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner William Williamson is absent tonight, so the motion passes to continue the item.
Thank you, and then shall we quickly just address um, four two one Holcombe? The meetings effectively, we, we have come to an end, so unfortunately, we don't have time to review this one, and we'd like to be able to have this, I've been, listen to this one at the very, very next meeting.
Um, yeah, we, why don't we continue it to the next meeting date? And unfortunately, I don't have a calendar in front of me. Ja- Jackie, do you have to know what that date is?
The tenth of January.
So if you could continue it to the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting, um, we could put it first on the agenda.
Do we need a?
Okay, I moved.
Yeah, thank you.
I moved to continue uh, four twenty-one Holcombe Avenue, uh, project number twenty-two dash fourteen to our January tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
I'll second.
Uh, do we need a roll call?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson is absent tonight, so the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Um, so I'm gonna close the public portion of the hearing. Um, and I believe, I don't have a copy of the minutes, I've lost it on all my papers, so I, I think we just have to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Correct, the, the minutes of the November eighth, twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting?
Yes.
I moved to approve the minutes of the November eighth, twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting.
I'm gonna have someone else second, because I wasn't in attendance.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, Commissioner Chalmers, are you gonna abstain? Okay, Commissioner?
Oh, abstain, yes.
Swisher?
I don't, was I at the last meeting or no? I don't think I was, was I?
Uh, I don't believe you were, no. Uh, Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yeah.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, so the majority of the people that were here that were there proved it. Um, hopefully that's adequate. Um, if not, we'll put it on the agenda again.
I thought actually other people could vote, okay.
They can, so if anyone wants to vote.
Yes.
Thanks, Jeffrey.
I trust you guys.
The motion passes, thank you.
Yeah, and then um, if anyone has any um, planning commissioners' reports, I'm gonna ask if they could hold them till next time.
Hey, I'm getting, I'm getting my second wind, it's, it's uh, early afternoon yesterday.
I had a really long one prepared, but I'll.
You did, I'm sorry.
Thank you all so much for attending tonight and staying that late to get through some of those items. Um, I'm sorry that the last one was continued, but um, hopefully we'll get back on track in two thousand twenty-three.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, January ten, and then just give us a heads up on how, on how long it might be. Um, for the, just for the record, I'm gonna try and not have these go too late like it was tonight.
Yeah, we would normally try not to give you a fight of items, so I'm sorry about that.
We, we did pretty good.
You did, very well, it, it was.
Continued a lot of them.
Oh, we approved one, I think.
Thank you all.
Thank you, bye.
Good night.
Oh, do we have to move to adjourn the meeting?
Oh.
You could move, someone can make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry, thank you for remembering.
All those in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Night everybody, Merry Christmas.
Hey, yeah. All right, see you next year.
Bye.
Bye, bye.